Everyone to our board meeting, we will start with our pledge of allegiance. Hope you'll please stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before, well, we just started with the pledge, but before we start with our next section, I just want everyone to know that's watching and that's here. We have started a new system. It used to be Board Docs, and now it's called Diligent Community. And so our agenda is coming up. It's like, you know, when there's an update to your iPhone or your Android phone and you're trying to find things? This is our first time, our first night on this new program. So if it's taking me or board members a few minutes to find the next agenda item or to find the policy that's come up, please forgive us if the meeting is not as smoothly flowing because we're just trying to learn this new program that it's on. But we are excited for this program because it will make it more user-friendly to the public and to us as we vote on things. So anyways, if you'll just please forgive us tonight for that. We will start with our open forum, our public comment section. All right. Okay, before every public comment section, I read this comment because sometimes people haven't come before. As we move into patron comments, I want to remind those who have signed up that they have three minutes to speak. Those speaking will be called in the order they signed up for. Once your name is called, please come forward and state your name into the microphone. All comments are recorded, so please speak clearly into the microphone. Once the timer goes off, we ask that you return to your seat. Please refrain from using profane language, making threats, or revealing confidential student or staff information. And I'm going to go off script for a minute here. We want to remind you that the board is here to listen during public comment, but we will not be able to respond to any questions or comments you may have. Any additional information can be sent to the board through email. As I've been board president and running these meetings, this has always been the most stressful time. And as simple as that statement is, when patrons, some of them, I mean, all of you, most of us, when you come up, we know you from our community, and it's very frustrating for us to kind of not respond to you. But that's kind of the way the laws and public meetings are set up. And so when we're not responding, it's not because we're not listening, it's not because we're not paying attention. It's really because stuff that you may bring up, it's not on our agenda for the evening, and that goes into public meeting laws. So know that as you are commenting, we are listening. And your phone number is on here, a lot of times maybe a district staff member may reach out to you. Some of you have already emailed us and made comments to us. So anyways, just keep that in mind, that sometimes, for me, and so I'm just like putting a little bit of my personal spin on it, it's a hard thing for you, for patrons, to come and speak. And we want to be like, okay, but let me tell you why right now. Let me, why about this whatever, whether it be the mask policy that was five years ago? And all those things that have come up over the years, it's something that we can't necessarily answer right on the spot. So know that we are listening. So anyways, with that, I will start with our first one, Kelly Hinkley.
Hi. That kind of like ruined what I was going to do because my original thing was to ask you guys a question. So I personally think that we need a little bit of clarification in regards to how the district is interpreting open enrollment and athletic eligibility. So I have heard, if you ask a coach, an A.D., someone on the board member, I get a different response every single time in regards to open enrollment. Okay, so we open enrollment for all three of the high schools, now four, out in Tooele County. So I guess the question is, is right now, as far as I'm understanding it, is that Deseret Peak, anyone who transferred into Deseret Peak boundaries, those students have to sit out for 50% of the season if they have played at a varsity level. I've heard other things like if they tried out for the team, if they were on the varsity but never actually played, if they clocked minutes. So I think that going back and forth is one of the things. But I also, originally, I was kind of for opening up, like putting a hard, like, okay, if they transfer, you can't. But now when I'm like looking at it and you're thinking about open enrollment and how that means we opened the enrollment for students, we never put a preface on it in the beginning. They should have equal education access, and that should include athletics. With a brand-new school, and I understand the UHSSA policy and I agree with it completely, but with a new school opening, it means that there's no existing program that these kids are transferring into. So it's not like coaches are recruiting, it's not like there was a team that was originally, they don't have a team advantage, I guess is what I'm saying. So if they don't have that athletic advantage, there's no intent to stack teams. Then you add on top that there's no senior class. So I have an incoming sophomore. She is, she developed fast. She's tall, she's big, muscular, and today at practice, she almost broke a girl's nose who is her same age. So I'm looking at it, I'm looking at these freshman boys who are coming in and could potentially have to play at a varsity level when you, because we don't have seniors. If they're having to play at the varsity level, looking at them getting physically injured, looking at their mental state, kids that are then playing in the place of those who are not athletically eligible. If those girls are playing and then my kid comes in and takes their spot, what is that saying to the girl that just carried the team? How are coaches supposed to deal with that? I just think that there is a lot of different things. And I don't necessarily think that we're asking for special treatment to not have that rule, but I do think that we're looking for equal treatment. So if a student has decided to stay at Stansbury or Grantsville or at Tooele, I think that that also applies to them and that that rule should apply, that they are also not able to play for half of the year. So that's it.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry if I'm going to get your names wrong. Ernesto Negrete? Can you say that for me? Please forgive me.
My name is Ernesto Negrete.
Okay, I was close.
I mean, kinda. Again, my name is Ernesto Negrete. I moved into Tooele County, my wife and my four daughters, probably about seven or so years ago. So very much like, for your name just behind me, who just was here, I have an incoming freshman into, well, trying to get into Deseret Peak. And so our concern is, you know, I guess the district has stopped enrollment for Deseret Peak right now, and it's maybe capped at 900 or so students with the school, I think, that has the capacity of 2,500 students or so. And I could be wrong, I'm not sure.
Not 2,500?
Not 2,500, okay, well, much more, probably more capacity than 900 for sure, right? It's a very large school. And then with, you know, my concern is with her going into Stansbury where it's, you know, a student ratio that's very high, you know, where there's possibly open seats at Deseret Peak, where maybe that student ratio could be a little bit more even, allowing this incoming, you know, freshman team to be able to get a better resource with, you know, education and one-on-one coaching and with their teachers. But then also, she's a volleyball player as well, so she's looking to get onto that volleyball team. And then we talk about, you know, possibly those impacts, right? That she was mentioning about, you know, these varsity players not having that and, you know, maybe their physical or mental health or anything like that. I think that's where, you know, some parents are trying to come from as well. You know, you have a very, a very, I don't know how to say this, maybe a harsher environment when it comes to some student athletes at a particular school versus maybe a fresh start at a different new school where with different coaching abilities and different staff, things like that, where it could be more beneficial for these incoming, you know, freshmen as well. So I think that was really our concern. And coupled with hers, too, I agree with everything that she said as well, so, thank you.
Is it Mark Harris? Matt Harris? Excuse me, sorry.
My name's Matt Harris. I actually live in Stansbury Park. I'm a lifelong Tooele resident, attended Tooele High School, graduated from Tooele High School. So a diehard Tooele guy, if you will. So I have actually talked with Bob Gounds a little bit about my concerns and the issues that are, they're going to be addressed, like the other two. It's about enrollment and also that about eligibility. I just, I've had a long conversation with Mr. Beers on the transfer rules and the issues at hand and kids being able to come in and come out. And I don't think that it's, you've taken a really strong look at what you've done or how it's been done in the fact that you elected to play 4A football, which is the major concern, putting these kids at risk where you have 25 juniors trying out for Deseret Peak High School, and that's not enough kids to play varsity football. And if you're a sports guy, you're going to understand that juniors, sophomores and freshmen can't compete on a varsity level, especially in the region that you've placed them in. So I just think you've put the kids at high risk, and then again, now you're putting eligibility rules on them where the previous individuals said you've allowed kids who live inside the boundaries to cross outside of the boundaries and not put any punishment on those. And if you'll take a look at numbers, you'll start finding out that the kids who are really pretty athletic have chose to stay at Tooele High School or Stansbury High School to play football because they're not going to be able to compete. And I think it's going to be a tragedy in the fact of you're going to get kids hurt and that they're not going to be prepared to play at that level. So that's kind of like my major concern. And then especially now putting, if a kid played on a varsity team, where you're saying varsity team, if he was a freshman and made the varsity squad and didn't play one minute, you still include that as a varsity sport. And the Utah High School Athletic Rule states that they do not regulate you for the first six months that you're in operation or before school opens in the first year. And then after that, you have to abide by state regulations. So all the regulations that have been put on the Deseret Peak is done by the district. And to me, I just don't think you've taken a long, strong look at what you've done or how that's fair for the other kids. Thank you.
Vince Anderson.
Hi, my name's Vince Anderson. Life for Grantsville, Grantsville alumni. Not an easy decision for me to back my son in wanting to go to Deseret Peak, but he's who I represent, he's my number one. His major choice is academics. I don't want to get into tit-for-tat, but Grantsville hasn't done him really good justice in the math department. He's a young man that wants to be an orthodontist, he's had that goal for about four years, and he's basically a straight-A student. And so he's seeking academics. On the side of that, he is a student athlete. And I don't like the fact that he's being punished for choosing a school. I think school choice is important, it's a big topic nationally. I feel like it's a punishment to the kids that are just seeking opportunities, whether it be, even if it is in athletics. But his major concern was academics. Secondly, I want to echo what they've said. I coached Little League football for a long time, from his age, seven-year-old, all the way up till they went to high school. There is a huge disparity from a 13, 14-year-old kid to an 18-year-old young man with facial hair. That scares the daylights out of me. And right now, Deseret Peak, I'm guessing, based off what Cruz is telling me, is going to have to field probably five or six freshmen, varsity level 4A, that has at least three of the top defensive recruits in the state. That scares the pants off me. Makes me feared to even go watch these games, these first five games. I'll be there, I'll support, but you guys really ought to look at that hard and see if there's any room around that because freshmen, even sophomores, aren't going to be physically ready. They're just not. They're not going to be physically ready in the pubescent standpoint in football. We can go down basketball, we can go basically every sport, it's just not going to be a fair fight. That's my biggest concerns. Without getting into too heavy of details, Grantsville just hasn't provided a good means for my son academically. He's chosen to move on, he's heard good things about mainly math teachers at Deseret Peak, which is what we're seeking. So that's mine, thanks.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments, and like I said, I'm sorry there wasn't the response. There is the response on the high school size. I apologize, I had to sneak that in there. Okay, we will now move on to the next portion of our board meeting. It's, we're moving on to consent items, so I will be looking for a motion.
Our motion that we approve the consent items as presented.
It's been moved by Scott, seconded by Bob, to move or to approve the consent items as presented. Is there any discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving on to action items. 5.1 Revised Policy 4009. This is a second read. It's educator evaluation. I'm sorry, this is where. Okay. Anyways, thank you.
So a couple, one change that was made was to match the language that's in code for educator because there was a little bit confusion on that word educator. And then also, one change that didn't make it in, but I would like to have made, so I don't know if we need to move it to a third read or if you can approve it for a second read with this change, but it is in Section G, which is evaluate, evaluation program components, number two, which is for administrator, and then G and H. And those lines read provisional administrators will receive a summative evaluation every three years, for the first three years, and administrators will receive a summative evaluation every three years as described in Section 8 of this policy. Based off of, well, we'd like to condense that down to say administrators will receive a summative evaluation every year, and that was based off the input from the area directors. But other than that, we'd like to, I don't know if it needs a third read or if you could do a second read with that change.
Emily.
Well, I was going to say that we moved it to a second read in order to see if there was any feedback. I've received none, we received none in our email. So I was ready to approve it, but I can amend and approve, but if you feel like we need another month to wait and see if people want to react to that amendment, then I won't do it.
And there's been no feedback?
No feedback, except for the area directors did request that currently we are evaluating administrators every year, and that's why, is to reflect what our current practice is.
Okay.
It's really not changing. You're already doing that practice, right? Then I would think we could go ahead and pass it.
Okay, then I would like, you're going to have to help me with this, though, because it's scrolling very slowly in this new program.
Yes.
Well, it's fine, I can read it, it's just, there's a lot to, yeah. So you said G2?
Yeah, G2 and then G and H.
G2, G and H. Okay, I motion that we amend Policy 4009 Educator Evaluation, Section G2, G and H, that instead of every three years, to say every year, and that we adopt the policy.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Emily, seconded by Valerie, that we amend 4009, Section G2, G and H, from every two years to every year.
Every three years.
Every three years. Is there any discussion to that motion? Oh, and adopt, and adopt this policy. Is there any discussion to the motion? Elizabeth?
So to clarify, is that the right change? Are we saying it correctly?
Yes, the administrators will receive a summative evaluation every year.
Okay. Bob? Oh, perfect, okay. Oh, Todd?
Every three years is, of course, what the information says here, the policy. It sounds like you're doing it every year, just want to make sure that that's there as well and understand, that I want to make sure I understand that. Why would every three years be in the policy? And is it needed every year for these types of evaluations to happen, if I may ask?
I'd probably have to default to the area directors if it's needed every year. That is what we're currently doing, what's in our current policy. The reason why it says every three years is we were just reflecting the language of the teachers, and the teachers are every three years. And so when the area directors read through the policy, current practice is every year, and so they had asked it to be changed to every year.
Okay, thank you, that answers it.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, Revised Policy 3035 Cash Receipts and Expenditure. Sorry. Okay, can I ask a question? I'm sorry, you guys, this is new. Do you care if I ask a question? Okay. Okay, I apologize, you guys.
If you open up, go to Tooele County School District, just the pointill generic page.
I did, I am.
Then go to meeting agendas.
Yeah.
Now, go to there, go to the.
That's how I.
What this is going to do is it's going to open tabs. As you go here, it's going to open your tab, just like it used to. If you close these other ones, now it's going to just open like the old one.
Okay, thank you. I really did practice earlier today, you guys. But it's better. It's better. Yes, I think so. Okay, yes. Okay, here we are. We're on 5.2 Revised Policy 3035 Cash Receipts and Expenditure. This is a second read. Lark?
Yeah, you pointed out this is a second read. We haven't, per my knowledge, we haven't received any comment on it. So I believe the recommendation is to implement it. Now, you'll see in the policy, we can take, unless you have any questions on the specific one, you can take multiple actions there. I would, the recommended action is to retire Policy 3034 and to implement 3035, and then they have some dot ones, two, three, one through five, I believe, for implementation. The only thing I will add, because I'll be quiet on the others unless you want to talk about them, is that in doing so, you may see, trying to remember which one is the travel. I think it's 30, nope, purchase orders.
Travel is 5.4, yeah, 3035.2.
2, okay, that one may come back because we, there's another policy out there in the board section of 1,000. I forget what it is, but there's a 1,000 travel. We thought, why don't we combine them so they're in one spot and you don't have to refer to two? But that may come back later, just so you're aware, in audit, or a policy committee.
Okay.
So I'll give a motion that we approve Policies 3035 and 3035 dot 1 through 1, dot 6 for implementation, as well as retire Policy 3034.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Scott, seconded by Bob, to approve Policy 3035 point 1 to, 3.3035 and 3035 point 1 through point 6 for implementation and retire 3034. Is there any discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. With all those points and a new program, come on. Okay. Okay, so there we are. Thank you, Bob. Okay, 5.9 Revised Policy 5031 Personal Technology and Communication Devices. This is a first read. Heather Castino, thank you.
So as far as I know, you're welcome. We haven't had any comment, nobody's reached in. The only communication we've had is kind of through administrators that parents have shared with them, and it has actually been overwhelmingly positive, so. Because we did implement procedures that reflected our current policies. And so this policy is just updating language to match what Senate Bill 178 has. So it's recommended for implementation.
Alrighty. I have a question, discussion item on it, I don't know if anyone else does. I, part of me, I always think, Melissa, leave your personal stuff out of this, but you know what, I'm on the board because of my personal stuff. I have six kids in this system, well, not, I'm down to three, actually. However, a few, like when the procedures were re-implemented and it was this big thing and, oh, no cell phones, we're just going to do it, or whatever, I mean, limited use, right? According to the policy. And so I would ask my kids, how's it going? Oh, yeah, it's good, Mom. Well, at the end of the year, and I'm not trying to call out any particular teacher because my kids are in your class, please don't treat them any different, because anyways, and I should say, it's not just my kids, I'm in the community with kids too, working with them. I'm concerned that, are we giving our teachers enough leverage to make sure they're gone? You know, not excessive, or I don't know how to say it without being so harsh, but technology in the classroom is important, but them scrolling is not okay. And I know that like when teachers finish a lesson early, I know teachers are like, all right, so you can, some, not all, I'm not a blanket statement on all the teachers, you know, or like, well, it's your time, you can do what you want with it. And when we were growing up, our time was doing what we want, might have been reading a book or drawing, I know, you know, all of those things. Our, what is our opinion on, well, if they're done with everything, is scrolling, is it allowed?
I think that would go. Do you want me to respond to that?
I would love that.
I think the answer to that would be, it really does lie with that school administrator to make sure that teaching is happening bell-to-bell, because that really is what should be happening in that classroom. There shouldn't be that downtime. You know, the expectation is that kids are engaged in doing what you need them to do, and the goal of the Senate bill was to remove devices from the classroom to interfere with that engagement. So I think that that could be handled at each individual school level and in each individual classroom. I don't know if teaching and learning would, how you feel about that, but there really shouldn't be that time, and that needs to be handled. So I would suggest if you have people coming to, or even your kids, I would tell anybody, go talk to that administrator, you know, and say, I think this is happening. Dr. Ernst, do you have any, am I covering that well?
Yeah, I actually agree 100% with that.
Okay.
And I do think our teachers have the ability to control it in their classroom, and I think those that are choosing not to are choosing not to.
100%.
Okay, so I, I mean, when I have other parents come to me and say, the cellphone policy didn't do anything, my response as a board member should be, these policies are in place, talk to the administrator, or maybe talk to the teacher first, give that teacher a chance.
The opportunity to respond.
The opportunity to respond, because maybe it was a one-off, you know, and, but I know my kids come home and then I end up talking to the teacher and they're like, that is not how it went down. And then I'm like, oh, yeah. I mean, remember, our kids are awesome and we love them, but don't believe everything they say.
Yeah.
I mean, trust, trust but verify, that's probably what I should say. Sorry, you're getting my parenting style up here now, too.
Communicate.
Okay, okay. Anyways, sorry, that's, Bob, do you have any comments?
You know, the only comments I've had, and I agree with Dr. Ernst and I agree with you, uniformity. If we can all, if all the schools can be uniform, that makes it a whole lot better. But I've had a couple people call me and say, well, school X is going to say they can't have them even at lunchtime and all that, and that's not what's said in here.
It does say that in our policy, that the school can choose to do that if they would like to.
Okay.
Yeah. Because we do have, I'm just going to give an example, our junior highs tend to have more trouble during passing times and lunch. And so one of them, for example, has chosen no phones, you know, and they've had. one of them, for example, has chosen no phones, you know, and they've had a reduction in the behaviors that were occurring before that, so. Yeah.
And Todd, and then Elizabeth?
I was just gonna clarify that point. Bell to bell, it's in the policy, no phone use. Outside of that, though, the individual school administrator gets to decide and choose what beyond that may or may not.
That's that classroom time term, yeah.
Okay, yep, got it. Thank you.
I have two things. Number one, I think, I mean, the board should know there were students on this cellphone policy committee who met monthly, and they were represented from elementary, junior high, and high school. And then second
They were honest. They were very honest. It was great, so.
And then second, I know, for example, in Grantsville, the junior high and the high school work together to have the same the way they're implementing it. So it's consistent from both schools.
Alrighty, thank you. I am looking for a motion then.
I motion that we ex, uh, what's the word?
Approve.
Approve. Policy five zero, three one, as it has been presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Todd, seconded by Elizabeth to approve revised policy five zero, three one as presented. Is there any more discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, five point one revised policy four zero, three two licensure, Crystal White. Really quickly, it says it'll be renamed. Do we need to rename it in the motion by chance? Or no? Okay. Just what's on that. Okay.
Well, I'll start with that. Let's rename it. So it was listed, the original name is LEA specific licensing, but then the policy went into a lot more than that. So the name just didn't seem appropriate. So just licensing. So, um, you'll see I also changed the purpose to make it just kind of matching what we're, what we're doing with that policy. So the purpose of the policy is to outline the requirements of certified employees to obtain and maintain valid credentials, including the required licensure and certification by the Utah State Board of Education. Sorry, I'm out of breath. I don't know why. I just get a little nervous. So a lot of this is taking out the very specifics that were in this policy um, about how to get this license type and this license type, and what are the requirements for an associate's and what are and if we went into that and updated that, we would have fourteen different license areas and each of their individual requirements for each level of licensing. Which is not necessary for our policy. So I took a lot of that out and I just put in reference the, the board rule. So that if you want to know what the requirements are for an associate for elementary, here's the board rule. If you want to know what the requirements are for a school counselor in high school, here's the board rule. Um, so that's really what a lot of this is. Um, it also then takes out the section on eminence. So eminence is outdated. It's no longer, it went along with the old letters of authorization that used to be part of licensing, but is no more, um, has been replaced with that LEA specific. So, um, the LEA specific section has been updated just to reflect the Utah State Code and board rules as to what is required to issue and to obtain an LEA specific license, where you can and cannot, um, request one. And that's about it. There's some basic license structure as to how licensing is set up, but really just pointing them to board rule for the specifics. Questions?
Todd?
You know, I read through this and, uh, I think overall it does do what you were wanting it to do, um, in just kind of understanding and trying to, to do all that. I wonder from a teacher's perspective, does this make it easier to become a licensed professional teacher? Does it make it more difficult? And what is our intent? Do we want to make it easier for teachers to become licensed and professional in our district?
So there's, there's nothing that we can do in our policy to change our policy to make it easier. Because they have to follow board rule. They don't apply to, other than LEA specific, they don't apply to us for licensing. We don't grant licenses. We don't even grant LEA specifics. We can request them. But USBE is the one who grants them. So it doesn't make sense for us to outline what they have to do when we don't grant it. They can't apply here. They have to apply there. I mean, that's why, I mean, I have a job to help them through that, because it's a confusing process, for sure. But it can't go through us. It has to go through USBE.
I just want a policy that's really clear for our teachers, so they really understand what that is. But it sounds like that at least a big portion of that needs to take place at the state level.
It does. And whether they deny or not is completely up to the state.
Is them entirely. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, Emily?
Yeah, I would say that the way that she's put this policy makes it so it has a longer shelf life for us, because she has it referring to board rule. And so if the actual, like, the numbering on the board rule changes and it's just not a huge deal, we can just put it in consent items to update it rather than put the whole new chunk of board rule in it every time. I mean, they can completely change the names of everything and then we'll have to redo it, which they do tend to do. But
They change it a lot.
Yeah.
I would say, I've been in my position for two years and it's drastically changed in even the two years I've been here. It changes a lot. They make changes all the time.
But anyways, it makes it, and I, just as an aside, I don't know a teacher that would look at our board policy in order to get their license. You just go to the state or talk to
If they went to our district, they'd come to me.
Yeah, they'd talk to her, look on the state
And then I would give them the information on the board's, the State Board of Education site.
Yeah. It's kind of formality.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion, unless there's any more questions. Anyone?
Yeah. I motion that we approve, oh, wait, we're do- I feel fine about approving it because this is all just from the state board. That we approve, um, policy
Four zero, three.
Three two licensing.
Moved by Emily, seconded by Bob to approve policy, revised policy four zero, three two licensing for implementation. Any more discussion to that? Elizabeth?
Is it licensure or licensing? On the policy, it says licensure.
Well, licensure would be a noun, right?
Oh. Yeah, you, it says that it'll be renamed to licensing.
I would say licensure.
Okay.
I'm not doing an action on it.
Okay. I will amend my motion, but let's name it licensure. Second.
Okay, you still second. Okay. So the motion is to approve revised policy four zero, three two for implementation called licensure. I did that backwards. Approve policy four zero, three two licensure for implementation. Moved by Emily, seconded by Bob. Any more discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, five point one one, new policy driver education program, first read Ricky Scott. He's our curriculum specialist. Um, there is a new policy.
Hello, board.
Hello.
Um, it's my first time being here with you guys. This is great. Um, so we have had in our district for several decades a driver education program. And I present to you a new policy to support said program. The program has been available now for you to read, so, um, there are some for the most part, it meets the standards and statutes as set up by the state. Um, because there are pretty strong requirements, both through the state board and through the legislature, as well as the Department of Transportation for the DLD. But, um, we do add some things for our district to make it really clear what are our rules and how we set it up. So I have for you a first read and curious if you have any questions for us.
I liked the explanation you gave to us on policy committee about the things that you changed. Would you be willing to share that again?
I'd love to. So one of the, some of the biggest changes that we have, um, is we establish an age for driver education. We have schools that for tradition's sake have allowed it, it's starting at fifteen and a half, or when you're a sophomore. This makes it really clear, when you're fifteen years old, no matter what grade you are in, you can sign up for driver education. It's caused several problems, especially in some of our schools that have done that, where kids are fifteen and a half, and now semester has ended, they're all sixteen, and now they still need five behind the wheel drives. It has slowed the process down and caused a lot of people. So now, as soon as they're fifteen, they can get in. So that's one of the biggest changes we've added for our district. The next thing that it codifies really clearly as well as it makes it clear that the grade scale for a driver education class is an A, B, F. And that is to meet the requirements of the state, that you have to pass everything within eighty percent or higher. So we've had in the past grades where it's been, kids have gotten a C and they passed the class, but they don't get credit for driver education. So it makes it really clear from the beginning, as soon as you're below an eighty percent, you are failing driver education to help make sure kids, parents are ready to kind of, kind of keep up with that. Um, it adds a requirement for kids to participate in driver education, that the parents have to acknowledge and sign off that those kids have had twenty hours of experience driving with the parent before they start behind the wheel. We have had several instances of kids who have literally never been behind the wheel, and now they're in a car with our instructor and another student in the back, and it's been really exciting. So we want the, the initial drives to be with parents before we put other kids
Parents don't want to be in the car with their children.
Congratulations. No, um, one of the biggest reasons is when a kid signs up for a permit, they actually, the parent has to sign off themselves, saying yes. There's a big thing, they read and they sign off saying, yes, I will drive with this student for forty hours before they receive their license. The next thing it does is it establishes kind of an expectation for kids that once they are approved and signed up for a behind the wheel drive experience, they need to continue signing up. We have kids that sign up and it kind of law, kind of, our teachers, our instructors are kind of assigned ten to twelve students. Um, and those are the ones they focus on. They drive those kids until they're done. And then if for some reason a kid slows that down, it just takes a three week, four week, ten week vacation, and they're not doing, okay, not really, but away from driver education, sometimes it'll bog that teacher down so they can't bring kids in. So it establishes an opportunity for these teachers to kind of say, hey, it's been two weeks. Do you know, do you want us to move you out so we can put someone back in, or kind of make that clear, so there's a good communication there? And one of the biggest things that it does is establishes a po- um, a penalty process. We have an issue as well. Driver education instructors must have two teach, or two students in the car at all times. And there are times when kids do not show, leaving one poor child there by themselves where the drive has to be canceled. And so this establishes for the first time in our district, some kind of a penalty process for no-show, starting with a warning, going up to being removed from being able to schedule a drive for several weeks, up to potentially on a third offense, a actual monetary fine. Um, and then after a fourth offense, they are removed from the program entirely. So that is new specific to our district. And other than that, I think, oh, the other thing that it does too, and it establishes also a rule, we haven't done this in the past, where we will actually be giving the written test within our driver education classes. That's something we haven't done in the past. Um, specifically because there's been problems with, um, accommodations with, with sped, the Department of Drivers License Division, they do not allow us to give any accommodations for any of the tests. So it makes it really clear that we will give the test in class, but if a student needs an accommodation, they will have to go and schedule something at the DLD to take that test. But other than that, it's pretty much standard.
Okay. Oh, Valerie and then Emily.
Okay, so, two questions. First of all, shoot, what were they? Sorry. Oh, so if, if somebody is penalized, they have to drop the course. Um, there's a fee for driver's ed. I'm assuming they eat that cost, the parents.
Let me clear this up.
Okay.
So first off, a kid is, what we're talking about is there actually is no fee to take a driver education class in our district. That's offered in every, every high school. Um, all of our bigger high schools, I guess I should say, Dougway and Wendover, it's not offered. Um, so what happens, the kids take the class, they pass the class, and then they will start the behind the wheel drives. It requires five drives with an instructor. That's when the pay comes in. So if a kid misses those drives, and they miss it multiple times, on that fourth time, they do lose that money that they have paid for that as a, as a part of that penalty. But that's again on a fourth offense. Um, rarely do we get there, but we just want to make sure it's really clear for both parents and students, um, the expectations of making an appointment and, and meeting that appointment.
Okay. And then the other thing was on the age, they have to be that age when they're registering for the semester? Or do they turn that age during the semester?
Yeah, it says that they need to be fifteen at the first day of the driver education course.
Okay.
So once they turn fifteen, the following semester they can
Got it. Okay. And that, it's, it's, I couldn't find it. It specifies that, right? Okay. Perfect, thank you.
I was just gonna say, I really like that they're doing this policy, because this is something I've seen criticized at the district so much and had personal experience with the backlog of driving. And this really should, you said it's already helped some of the things, even though we haven't done all of this.
We haven't done a lot of this.
We haven't done a lot of this, but just the things that have been done already are already helping.
We have done our best to ensure that this program is what our district and our county and our, our students need. So we've been working really hard to.
So I was just saying, I, I'm excited to see something in place to make it something that's actually a good viable option for families, that they'll actually be able to do it. I don't have any personal problems with it, but I would be, um, great with, you know, hearing back from the community for a month if.
So I'm looking for a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion. Uh, that we move new policy driver education program to a second read.
Moved by Valerie, seconded by Emily to move driver education, new policy driver education program forward to a second read. Is there any discussion of that motion? Todd?
Why a second read? Is it just to give a, a month or two to get some feedback? Is that your purpose in doing that?
Yeah, so we make sure that people have had a chance to look at it and let us know, or forever hold your peace.
Okay.
Because it's maybe a new policy. Okay. All in, oh, to Scott?
I was gonna ask the same question that Todd had. I just, I, I don't recall our meeting scheduled in July, but it's often not uncommon for us not to meet in July. And so with that in mind, it seems like it would be great to have this in place before the school year starts and you start on, you know, and not wait until August. So, and I don't feel like there's anything terribly controversial. I think as a district, we are just holding we, we've set some clear expectations and we're, we're defining those, but that
Would that be your preference, that we just implement it?
Yeah, I think it would be, I actually hadn't thought about that timing. I think it would be helpful. Our plan, again, with all of these changes is to communicate, communicate, communicate. We have, um, we're gonna have a common, um, course disclosure document that every school will have. We'll have things in place to make sure that parents know very clearly the expectations, and it would be wonderful to have that done before the school year starts. However, if you decided to move it to August or, or the following meeting, we could still mean, most of this is the biggest effects for this, other than, I mean, we have schools that are already signing kids up at fifteen, so that hasn't been an issue, but this makes it so that it's really clear. The behind the wheel really won't really affect it until following that time. And so it would be okay to, to do it now, but also it'd be okay to wait till August.
Okay, it did, it did say in the proposed motion to approve for a second read, so that was partially why I did it. But I'm happy to amend that to implement this policy.
Okay, so the amended policy is to approve driver, uh, new policy driver education program. It's been seconded again by Emily. Any more discussion to that amended policy, or amended motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, new policy, discipline of students with disabilities of first read. Marissa Lowry.
All right, this, we're just looking to retire six zero, two two, six zero, two three, and six zero, two four, and creating a new policy that just consolidates all that information into one, that aligns with current model policy, as well as state and federal rules and regulation for special ed. Any questions?
Todd?
Sorry, I do have a question here. Um, I read through it. I, I like it. I, uh, I wonder, does this, um, from again, a teacher's perspective, as I visit schools, as we all visit schools, we know there are certainly some issues and challenges, um, that our teachers are facing. And, uh, with these, with, with retiring the old and, and updating, uh, the new policy here, kind of what I've asked in the past here is, you know, what does this do for our teachers? Uh, just if you could summarize the strengths of the new policy and, uh, how our teachers will benefit from this new policy. If you could just summarize that.
Yeah, so currently, right now, within, if there's a school discipline, uh, with with a student with a disability or they violated code of conduct, so a safe schools violation, you go through a manifestation determination review. During that process, it allows us to review the documentation, the incident to determine, is this a manifestation of the student's disability? Do we need to look at a different placement? Do we need to revise the IEP? And so at this time, it removes the student from the classroom if necessary in order to, to give the team ample time in preparation if the student, for when the student returns. Does that answer your question?
That's a pretty quick summary.
Yes. We're already doing it. It's federal rules.
It's already there.
Yes, it's already there. The biggest, the reason, we started diving into this and I felt like with parents, they'd look at one policy and then they wouldn't find the other policy. And so I felt like we needed to consolidate it and create a new policy. So it's kind of a one-stop shop for all.
So we're doing it, we're just updating the policy to reflect what's actually happening currently? Thank you.
Valerie?
I was just gonna make a motion. I motion we retire policy six zero two-two, six zero two-three and six zero two-four and move new policy discipline of students with disabilities to implementation.
It's been moved by Valerie, seconded by Todd to retire policy six zero two-two, six zero two-three and six zero two-four and implement new policy discipline of students with disabilities for implementation. Is there any discussion to this motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. New policy salary supplement for highly needed educators. This is the first read. Chantel Cowan.
Okay, state code fifty-three F two, five oh four, basically retires the TSSP program, which is the Teacher Supplemental Salary Program that was received by math teachers, science teachers, special ed teachers and a few others. And it replaces it with the SHINE program, which is the salary supplement for highly needed educators. And basically what it does is it moves the identification and administration of the program to the district level instead of at the state level, requires us to have a policy about how we're going to identify the different areas and, and how we're going to pay them and who would qualify for the program. And I guess are there questions on the, the policy?
I only have one concern with the, and, and that is section C three. I, I appreciate today, that today we are getting a thousand, or at least a thousand for FD. But understanding the funding by the state, that's not a guarantee. So I'm not understanding why we go through the iterations of three and then in four, we're just basically doing that as a percentage. So I guess my recommendation would be that we don't have any base called out, like as it's called out in section three, but instead we just simply do the math that's called out in four anyway because, because yeah, we may have a thousand dollars, well, we have over a thousand today, but it the, it's not a given on any given year from the legislature that we'll even have that much on, on any given year. It doesn't really change anything. It just kind of gets rid of section three's minimums.
Yeah, as we were discussing this as a committee, a lot of the committee members felt the same way. In the code, it kind of calls out that we need to indicate the amount that the, that the educators are receiving and that's why we kind of did this base pay. The reason why we did a thousand dollars is because looking at our allocation that we receive every year, it's a very safe number. And then there is also a clause in it that basically says, I think it's number eleven, that the payment of the salary supplement under this policy is subject to legislative appropriations and available funds allocated to TCSD. And it does say in this policy also that if we receive less, that everybody would be decreased by the same percentage. Trying to find out where that one.
Yeah, I don't see eleven, so.
What's that? On eleven? Oh, a limit? It is, I know it's in here.
Right at the very bottom, letter I, the payment of salary supplements under the policies of legislative appropriations and the availability of funds allocated to TCSD for the purpose by the state board.
That's where I'm kind of saying, if we don't even have that much money, I just, today it's okay. I just could see a scenario where we don't even have that minimums. I.
No, I, I don't disagree. We wanted. There is a clause in place to protect us. Also, it's a policy we have to revisit every year. So it is something that if our allocation that we're going to receive is a lot less, it is something that we can address and change. But we definitely want to make sure that this program runs in the black and not in the red.
And, sorry.
Todd?
And is that what, is that what a safe number means to you? Is that we run in the black and not in the red? Cause you used the term red, I was just wondering what that meant.
Yeah.
We're well within.
So our allocation is almost six hundred thousand that we'll receive this next year. It's a little less than that. We do take the, the benefits off of, or the taxes and stuff off of that. So we have about four hundred thousand that we'll be able to distribute. And if we look at kind of what the recommendation is for who we would allocate that money to, we're looking about a hundred educators. And if we do that, then their supplement would be right around four hundred, four thousand. And so that's why a thousand we felt was very safe. Cause it's a quarter of what they would receive.
Isn't it, sorry.
Emily?
Isn't it in the legislation that we have to revisit it because of the schedule at the bottom?
Um, yeah, so it, it is in legislation that it needs, the, the policy does need to revisit it every year.
Is my point, is that we have to look at this policy every year anyway.
Didn't I say three years though?
We are, we are recommending that the identified areas, however, be identified for three area, for three years. And the reason is, is because we also, we want to use it as an incentive, but also as for those that are associate credentialed to encourage them to get their professional credentials. And so we figured if it was only one year and then we changed, that that might not be enough of incentive. So if we allocate those areas for three years, but we still have to revisit the policy every year.
Valerie?
Uh, so I was going to ask, do you, do you want this to go to a second read or should we go ahead and implement it?
I would prefer implementation, but it's up to you. We can absolutely do a second read if you'd like to.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we implement new policy salary supplement for highly needed educators. Shine first, or sorry, that's it. We implement this policy.
It's been moved by Valerie, seconded by Bob to implement salary supplement for highly needed educators. Any more discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Revised policy one-one-zero-one-six, alternative language services program. This is a first read. Stephanie Reilly. Who is our federal programs director?
Good evening. So this is a revision. There, the major changes that happened would be the matching to model policy, removing the excess verbiage that was already there. It is in line with what's hap, what is required from federal law under title three of Every Student Succeeds Act, which our district is compliant to with the state consolidated ESOP plan and our, our Utah admin rules R two-seven-seven-seven-one-six. And so the only section under model policy that was left out of our policy revision was the last paragraph, paragraph, which has to do with consolidation of funds, which does not work for our district because our district is too large. So that I left out. Other than that, there, it looks like a lot of changes, but it was just trying to match it up to the model policy as best possible. Any questions?
If there's no questions, I am looking for a motion or comments, concerns. Valerie and then Emily, oh Valerie?
I was gonna make a motion.
Perfect.
Okay. I'm, we're okay to implement it. Okay. I move that we implement revised policy one-one-zero-one-six, alternative language service program.
Moved by Valerie, seconded by Emily to implement policy, revised policy one-one-zero-one-six, alternative language services program. Is there any discussion of this motion?
I do have, really quickly, one question about it and it has to do with, it, it, it sounds like you're revising this and I just want to make sure that any, you're just trying to follow model policy. Is that what you're doing here?
Correct.
And is there any chance that this could increase the amount of language services that we provide to parents and others? Will it, could it potentially increase that, which would be an additional cost potentially to our district to do that?
Yeah, so that would fall under probably a different funding source in the long run. If we were to support, if I understand you correctly, if we were to support providing English lessons for say, for more adults. It's already happening within adult education realm. But for us to expand that, we would be looking for other funding sources. This one specifically is for title three, which has to do with following civil rights law on the federal level. And so those pieces do not change because we already have that in place. So I hope I answered that question. If you need me to clarify any further.
Emily?
Yeah, that, yes. If more kids are identified as needing language services, it would potentially cost us more money. But it's federal law and so we'll just need to pay it.
And currently on the federal level, the title three is on the docket for being defunded. So civil rights and funding, we're gonna be playing the game anyway in the future, so we'll see what happens. But yeah, this is something that we just have to do. Yes.
Okay. Any more questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Oh, I'd say that was a discussion of the motion. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Five point one-five, new policy, ethics policy regarding employee private activities. This is a first read. I, I'm gonna start out. I think I'm, I have had coaches and teachers come up and talk about this policy and so I, I will just be transparent. I've been in supportive of it. I'm hoping, have we gotten any comments on this policy yet?
I haven't seen.
Okay, I would like to see it go to a second read. I know it just depends on a motion, just so that there, I have been peppered with a lot of questions regarding it. So anyways, but I think anyways. Do we have questions, comments, concerns about it? Do you want to introduce it and kind of talk about it?
So this is, we kind of talked about it, I think back in April.
Yes.
But then I went through and redid things or kind of meshed policies, trying to make it read better. This just allows coaches, advisors to be able to to host camps or clinics and be able to be paid for it if that's what they choose. Or currently right now, and this is model policy, that they decide to do it outside of their job, that they can host a camper clinic at a high school, but they would be treated like a private citizen, anyone who would have the opportunity to rent, advertise any way that a public citizen, a private citizen might be able to. So it just separates those two, so it puts that out there. The one thing, as I was going through and I was talking to Emily Spinlove about this earlier today, in N one, letter N, Nancy one, to clear it up, the language I'd change it to would be the participant registration fee for students of the host school would, may not exceed the board-approved fee schedule. So just saying that if, if a student at Twilla High is attending a camper clinic at Twilla High, we can't, it, it would have to fall under the fee schedule, cause it could be a fundraiser. That's all that, that piece is saying. Cause we, you'd have, that'd have to be a board-approved fee on that. But if a student went to another school, or you had a sixth grader who went to camper clinic at Stansbury High, there is no, that doesn't go against the board-approved fees or anything like that.
If it was a private camp or the.
If it's a public, if it's an extracurricular camp, a private camp, they can do whatever, they can set the fees. They're not tied to the school, but anything tied to the school would have to. Yeah, we'd have to the fees. Yeah, so that's all that's saying. That's the only piece I, as I was going through it again earlier today, that would need to be updated as well.
Okay, Scott, did you have a comment?
I think this addressed the concerns that I had a couple of months ago. I appreciate that Melissa feels like a secondary. I kind of feel like we moved forward. But, you know, if somebody feels strong, I, I think it addresses all those concerns. My, my only is, we've got to rename this. I don't think I would think to look there with that. I, I appreciate, but I don't know if it's, even if it's just, I, I don't know even what it is, but school-sponsored extra, school and individual-sponsored.
Camps and clinics?
Camps and clinics or something. But it just, this to me, I honestly didn't, when I pull it up, I thought this has nothing to do with what it was when I got to it.
It's got tutoring lessons and travel opportunities in there also.
Some, I'm up for anything.
Which is why it needs to go to a second read.
I mean, it could just, as simple as But it's more than that, because it's both the district. The word ethics is the part that I don't think that, that. Yeah. That comes out of model policy, because the ethical part comes into, you know, treating a coach or whatever, if they're acting as a private citizen hosting a camper clinic, these are things that they have. It just doesn't feel like this would be something I would even think that this had the content. And I understand, and I'm open to anything, and I'm open to, to another read. At this point in the summer, camps and clinics already been approved, so I don't feel like it's a huge rush right now. We definitely need to get going, you know, begin the school year so we have time to get it all together and implemented, but. So if, if the name was just as simple as school or employee-sponsored activities and camps. I mean, at least it's just broad enough that, hey, I'm doing this. And because we've got activities, you know, the touring, whatever, but it's just school and/or employee-sponsored activities and camps. At least it kind of tells you what the subject matter might be. I, I, and that's just a suit for my, but I don't know. When I read this, I truly didn't have a clue what this was gonna be.
Yes. Todd?
I motion that we go to a second read for this policy, ethics policy regarding employee private activities, which doesn't make a lot of sense. Yes, with those two recommendations. One is a name change that's a little better. And the second is what you brought up in your conversation. Was it regarding, where was that?
It was in, letter N, one.
Yep, in letter N.
About the fee schedule, just making sure that's clear.
It's been moved by Todd, seconded by Bob to move new policy, ethics policy regarding employee private activities to a second read with looking at the title, changing the title, looking at it and cleaning up the language in N one about the fee schedule. Is there a discussion of this motion? Okay, I'm gonna say one discussion on this. We, over the years, I think anyone is, I know that there were coaches sitting here in here earlier tonight. We value our teachers, we value our coaches. I think everyone that's been in education for many, many years know that it is a thankless job that spends hundreds of hours outside of their normal. Also because of that, we, other school districts have kind of taken this policy and given their coaches and teachers. I mean, it could be tutoring lessons, it can be a science camp. It's not just someone to say, why are they doing this just for, you know, coaches? It's anyone that could, you know, help students in Twilla County, you know, and then in turn save us money. I know that, you know, I've driven my kids all over the West Front to different camps and I would much rather. and I would much rather keep it right here in Twilla County and pay a coach or a, a teacher here. So anyways, I just wanted to let the public know that we are looking for ways, because I have started to get comments from constituents, I can't believe our coaches, you know, or don't get paid more when they find out. Um, and obviously, they are already fighting for our teachers and teacher salaries, we know that. But anyways, this might give an opportunity, so I don't know if anyone has any more comments to that. I don't mean to take it over, but, um, and maybe I didn't say it very eloquent, eloquently, but that's, it's just giving them an opportunity to earn more money. In an, I guess, in an ethically, in an ethic way, ethically? With ethic, ethics? I, I better stop. Okay, um, okay, all, if there's no more discussion of the motion, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Revised policy, five point one six, revised policy four zero one four, employee leave, second read, Lark Reynolds.
Okay, this one, um, just to review, this is a second read, we had it last time. The core change in this one is the paid parental leave that, uh, would bring us in compliance with that, there is one small minor change on the first page. That's actually what we have been doing, but we're just spelling it out in policy for what happens when an employee, um, works a part year. The thing being addressed there is we usually front, front-load leave, and so sometimes if they leave early or come in the middle of the year, it just clarifies what we've already been doing, and those are the only two changes.
Okay, are there any other questions? If not, uh, Emily.
Oh, sorry, somebody.
No.
I was gonna say, I haven't heard any feedback to this, but also it's adding a parental leave benefit, so I think that we're ready to, I move that we implement policy, um, approve policy four zero one four for implementation.
I'll second.
Moved by Emily, seconded by Valerie to approve revised policy four zero one four for implementation. Is there any discussion of the motion, Elizabeth?
There is one little, small typo I see, can I just give it to Jackie afterward? But I want to.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Five point one seven, sensitive materials review. Uh, the board will review the following books for a sensitive material. Should, I guess, we, yeah, Shawnee, do you want to come up and explain maybe, yeah, sorry, I put you on the spot, I apologize. Um, and maybe if I, I just explain it, just explain why we are doing this, maybe from a, the law perspective, maybe? Is that okay? I apologize to put you on the spot.
It's okay. Um, according to state law, we updated our policy last fall to include if a book goes to appeal, which appeal goes to the board members, that it will be voted on in a public board meeting to get the decision for the appeal. So the choices would be to retain, remove, or restrict the book according to the vote. So is there anything else you want me to clarify, or?
Yeah, these are books that are currently on our shelf in our libraries.
Yes, um, they've gone through, they went through a review process last summer. Um, under our old policy, they, uh, were, uh, The Handmaid's Tale was, um, restricted to 12th grade only, so it is available in the library to 12th grade students. And then Me, Earl, and the Dying Girl is, was retained, so it is available in the library.
And so, let me just explain to the public, so they have already been through the appeal. The decision that was made with the committee was then, um.
The decision was appealed by a constituent in, in our.
Which is why then it comes to the board, sorry, that's what I wanted to explain. This is why we are now voting, because it has gone through a committee. Um, the one was voted restricted, and, and those decisions were appealed by a constituent.
Yes, correct.
Is that a good way to explain it? Okay, perfect. So, um, we will go ahead and vote, and anyways, on the Handmaid, Handmaid's Tale. Yes, oh, excuse me, Scott, if you'll make.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll just make a motion that, uh, we uphold the decision of the committee regarding the Handmaid's Tale, to keep it restricted to 12th grade and older, or I guess tw- just 12th grade, we don't have 13th. So 12th grade, uh, with permission of, and checked out only at permission of their parent or guardian. Uh, and, and the reason for that, as I understand, we have to have a reason, and the reason would be, I, I don't feel like it meets the standards of our community.
Second.
It's been moved by Scott, seconded by Elizabeth, to uphold the decision of the committee to restrict The Handmaid's Tale for 12th grade and older, um, with parental permission.
We will add the permit, parental permission piece to the restriction.
Okay. And, um, the reason for this is it doesn't meet the community standards.
Community standards, okay.
So moved by Scott, seconded by Elizabeth, is there any other discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Me, Earl, and the Dying Girl is our next vote.
So before we do that, I'm sorry, I was under the impression that that was already, the restriction was that they had to have parental.
It was restricted that 12th grade students could check it out without, that, the committee voted that it would be available to 12th grade students without parent permission. We have another title that has been through the review process, which is The Handmaid's Tale, uh, the graphic novel. And that one was restricted with parent permission, so they're two different books.
Got it, okay.
That's probably where the confusion was.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, sorry, so then I was going to make a motion for Me, Earl, and the Dying Girl. So would it be an option to y- put a restriction on that book for parental permission, but for all grades?
Yes, that is a choice.
Okay, so I, I would make a motion that we, with Me, Earl, and the Dying Girl, um, that we put that on restriction, that if a student wants to check it out, they need to have parental permission, um, for the same reason as the other book, I would, I dare say that the content is not in line with, um, community standards, but I realize that's debatable, so I like the idea of leaving it up to the parents if they, the students can access it with parental permission.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Valerie, seconded by Scott, to restrict Me, Earl, and the Dying Girl to parental permission.
To be checked out.
To be checked out with, only with parental permission. Due to.
We, we didn't specify, it just occurred to me, is it high school only, I mean, I'm assuming, but I, I think we should be very specific and.
Is it only on our high school shelves now anyways?
Only in our, um, nine through 12 libraries.
Oh, okay, I just didn't know if that mattered, but if we're gonna go through this, we ought to be clear, I guess.
Yeah, so I guess we could add only in high school.
Yeah.
Except it's only there anyways.
Okay.
But then it doesn't open it up.
A future.
Librarians and, and other grade, and other schools could add it.
Would you restate your motion? I apologize.
Okay, um, for the book, Me, Earl, and the Dying Girl, I move that we put it on restriction for high school students only with parental permission.
I'll still second that.
You, on your other motion, said something about the reasons.
Reason is still the same. I believe the content, uh, may not be in line with our community standards.
And I'll still second it again.
Okay, um, the motion is Me, Earl, and the Dying Girl. It, it has moved to restrict Me, Earl, and the Dying Girl to our high school-only students um, with parental permission only, um, because the content does not fit our community standards. Except the first time you said it was because you wanted parental permission. Let the parents decide. Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure I got it right. Okay, is there any discussion to that motion?
Can I note one thing?
Yes.
The majority decision was to retain the book, uh, three to one to two vote, which was not the case with the prior book as well, just wanted to note that, that, uh, that's what the committee came up with.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, five point one eight, TSSA framework, Lark Reynolds.
Okay, um, traditionally this time of year, we bring you the framework, just to review for, um, next year as, as schools will start submitting plans, um, the intent of that, uh, this is actually last year's plan, just revising the dates um, for next fiscal year, so unless there's anything you want to add or take away from, um, we'd recommend you, you approve it.
Oh, sorry, I don't know who went first.
Go for Bob.
Bob.
I move that we approve the TSSA framework.
Move by Bob, seconded by Emily, that we approve the TSSA framework. Is there any discussion of this motion? Valerie?
Yeah, I, I am wondering, um, the, when this list is composed, is that, uh, is it all put together by leadership, district leadership, um?
We put it together as a board when TSSA first came out.
And we've just rolled it over continually every year.
We have, and that's why we are to look at it every year.
Got it.
In fact, Dr. Ernst, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of, some of the stuff this came for, hiring of additional aides to cover duties, came from your dissertation?
Yeah, that's correct.
I remember you were an area director, I was a newly elected board member near, near the first part, yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
So a lot of this stuff came, anyways, um, so yes, the board is the one that sets this framework. So if this is something that, uh, you know, the board wants to add to, this is definitely time for discussion on that. Or we can do it, you know.
Yes, um, and then, you know, typically, we base our decisions on the expertise of, um, district leadership. So I guess I just want to confirm, like, that they're still comfortable with the list as well.
Yeah, I, we are, we, we've had a few discussions about this, and really, the list is, uh, it's written in such a way that it is pretty flexible in what we can do. The only thing I could say that the board could possibly do now, or even in the future, is you could, uh, let's say that, I, I mean, because it's, it's, there's 10 items, one through 10, they're not in any specific order, but let's say the board was really concerned about, um, number seven, hiring support for kindergarten classes. Uh, that's something that, that, uh, the board could say, uh, we really would like schools to focus on that area in this upcoming school year. Uh, so those are things to consider as you look at this, that you could give us additional direction in, even though there's a lot of flexibility here, we would really like to see some emphasis put in certain areas.
Okay, but by not giving those specifications, then, um, administrators can kind of decide what is best for their school and run with that. Okay.
Dr. Ernst, um, and then I'll get you, Elizabeth. I, I thought, short, I mean, shortly after that presentation you gave, I thought the board really did emphasize, make sure your, um, what's the, hiring of additional aides to cover duties.
Yeah.
Is that still not a priority, or is that just a suggestion? I would hate to.
I would say that, um, there's different levels of priority for each school based on what the school needs, and so, but yes, you, you are correct. The, the board's direction several years ago was that they wanted each school to hire, uh, aides in order to cover things like recess duty and stuff, to take those duties away from teachers. Uh, and I, we would have to look and see how, how many schools still have 100% covered by, by aides, and how many don't.
I guess, um, when we talk, I, I'm, I'm so sorry, I'm gonna make you ask, answer questions on your dissertation, sorry, Valerie. Actually, is it along these lines, or can I finish mine? Is that okay? Okay. Um, your dissertation talked about morale of teachers, and what would get the biggest bang for our buck for morale for teachers? And I remember a part of the chart is, you could pay them, I don't want to say a number, of course, we're all gonna want $500,000, but, I mean, you could pay them a large sum of money, and that wasn't gonna fix morale? And so much, am I right that your research was like?
That's correct.
Morale is to cover these aides, recess, lunch, all the things.
Teachers are an interest, interesting breed, where, uh, a lot of teachers do their job because they love kids, and they love passing on their knowledge of whatever their subject matter is to the next generation, and they want to raise kids up. Because of that, um, even though teachers like to complain about money, they also realize that, you know, you're, you're not gonna be Mark Zuckerberg, you know, you're not gonna be filthy rich, being a teacher. You're gonna make a good living, and you're gonna be able to, to, uh, meet your, your family's needs. Um, but what's much more important to them is that intrinsic value that they get from teaching. Um, and so that's why pay matters, but it's not the number one reason. However, uh, what I found i- in my research, and this was done here in Twilla County, was that the number one way we, that our teachers, uh, the number one, the way we could impact morale of our teachers was to eliminate duties, uh, recess duty, bus duty, um, things like, yeah, lunch duty, those extra duties that we, we, we require them to do. So when I presented that, and then TSSA, uh, came along, uh, the Board of Education said, yeah, let's do that, let's take that money, and let's take those duties away from our teachers, freeing up their time, uh, so they can do what we've really hired them to do, which is to educate our students, uh, not necessarily watch them eat lunch. Even though there, there's some benefits to being on lunch duty, there really are, um, but it, it shouldn't be the, the number one thing that we ask our teachers to do.
Elizabeth?
One thing I propose to add is an increase in behavior texts. When the area directors present, they all say behaviors are increasing, and there's just not even that many behavior texts in the district.
Um, Emily?
I agree with that, but I feel like what's written would cover that, does it not cover that? Like, the, um, additional aides, or should we add it?
Yeah, it kind of depends on when you say behavior text.
Expenses geared toward improving student outcomes.
Yeah, when you say behavior text, it depends on what you mean by that. Uh, we have, we have, and, and Marissa, feel free to jump in if I, if I say something wrong. We have behavior texts that are certified individuals, and, and are, um, certainly fulfill a great purpose in our school district. We also have, like, refocus aides in our elementary schools that help with some of those behaviors. Um, and, and not, they're not equivalent in any way, but they all help with the behavior of, of the schools and, and what our student, what our principals deal with. So, yeah, I think the framework, as it's written, covers that. You could, if you wanted to, again, you could spell it out, emphasize it, and say, this is what we want. You could also give that as direction from the board, to, we'd really like to see that more based on number whatever, because it says that we can do that.
Um, Emily?
Oh.
Oh, sorry, you didn't have your loud in, okay. Um, okay, well, I, I'm not gonna make a motion, because I, I won't, but I don't know how, if other board members feel like, I, I would like to see, I would like, does this go to a sec, this needs to be approved, right? Because, there is a motion? Oh, there is a motion, we're voting on it. there is a motion? Oh, there is a motion. We're voting on it. Okay, well, just for information, I think I would like to see how many schools are, uh, utilizing money for the aides personally.
And I'll speak to my motion.
Okay.
I think, I think, you know, cause I do remember as we were putting this together the first time, the emphasis on the aides and the, and, and that type of thing. I'd like to see the progress that we've made, you know, and, and make sure that we include the behavior, you know, the behavior texts and that type of thing falls under that as well, as far as direction goes.
Okay, Scott?
I would just broaden out what you, you're both asking for and it gets that, but what I might suggest is, could we just get a summary of where the TSSA dollars go? I mean, the, how many dollars were spent on each of those, was it ten categories? I don't have it up. You know, we spent fifty dollars on this and five thousand dollars on this, or whatever it is, and I think that answers your questions, because you'll know. What, and, and if you want to, you could throw a percent on there and it'd make us feel even better. You know, ninety percent of our money's going to aides. Or, or fifteen percent. I, that would answer your questions and concerns and then we could go from there.
I have a question for you. So we already have the plan that says exactly what every school is using, so you say you want an overall district wide?
Yep. How much should we spend as a district with these funds and these ten buckets?
Need to look at those individuals.
Yeah, we, we can go back on board docs.
Yeah, I think the key is based on the ten, the ten areas.
In one of those ten, yeah. Hopefully it adds up to a hundred percent.
Okay, I apologize, that was a discussion of the motion. I, sorry. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do you, do you want to give me a due date on that or just as I get it, bring it to you? As I get, okay. I mean, it shouldn't take real long.
You could just email it if you'd like to the board.
Okay, perfect.
Because we don't revisit TSSA funds again for another year, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, five point one nine, TEA Association Negotiated Agreement, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Um, I'm just gonna read the little subtitle, negotiations with the TEA have concluded. The TEA members have ratified the agreement and it is submitted for the board's approval. I am looking for a motion.
I'll motion that we approve the twenty-five, twenty-six TEA negotiated agreement as presented.
Moved by Scott, seconded by Bob to approve the TEA negotiated agreement as presented. Is there any discussion of this motion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Or any, any opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained, thank you. Duly noted. Okay. Information discussion or calendar items, business administrator report, Lark Reynolds will present to the board on our proposed budget.
Okay. It looks like it's on the screen behind us, so we're ready to go. As you know, that a couple of weeks ago, coming up on the deadline, I emailed you all the, uh, a PDF that has all the detailed numbers behind, uh, what I'm about to present on as far as our proposed beginning budget for fiscal year twenty-six. Um, keep in mind that I usually build one without a tax increase. I feel like to meet the law, we need to do that, we need to show what, uh, proposed revenues would be if we kept the taxes, um, the same as the prior year. And so, just to, to dive into that, I like to, as you traditionally know, like to start with a little humor. This is something I learned about tunnel vision from the perspective of a mole, maybe a gopher, that was in this, in this ad a little while ago. Um, so you can see, I'm gonna assume this is the, I'll just say wife, it could be, I don't know who she is, but she basically says, I'm leaving you, Mitchell, you never had tunnel vision and you never will, so. Because in this case, uh, Mitchell didn't, it was bad for him. But, uh, hopefully, well, when it comes to this budget, hopefully we don't have tunnel vision as we look, look at it here together. So what you were presented with, hopefully that looked like, uh, a lot of the discussions we've had over the past few months as we've been diving into that. We have been talking about it, as I pointed out there, it assumes that, um, that these estimates in there, that third bullet point down, uh, assumes that my estimates were what the certified tax rate would be. Now, the good news is, is ever since then, they, this county actually has the rates out there. We're just short of one levy. The, the state, uh, basic levy has not been set, so I can't just finalize them now. But the good news is, just my high level looking from when I wrote this a week ago to today, um, those estimates are pretty close, so. High level, uh, we actually had more in new growth than I had, I did tell you they were conservative estimates. We had, uh, more in new growth and so, um, as far as at a fund level, we're talking within a few hundred thousand dollars. Um, that's how close they were, so, and when you're talking millions, that's, I feel like that's a pretty good estimate. But let's, let's dive into what was included in this base budget, so hopefully this addresses most of the questions you have. If not, we'll, uh, feel free to ask them as we go through. Um, but, uh, as you know, and we've talked about this in the past, uh, between eighty and ninety percent of our general fund budget has typically been in salaries and benefits. And realizing that that is our largest cost in the general fund, that's where we start with is, is doing a detailed look at all the positions that we have. And so, um, this budget assumes that all the positions that we've had in fiscal year twenty-five, uh, we'd have the same number of positions starting in FY twenty-six. That was in the base budget. Uh, you just talked about the negotiations, but it did include a level advancement for all employees who qualify. And then, once we had that kind of as a base, uh, we began to add in the positions that we've talked about, new positions that we've talked about, at Desert Peak High School, Stansbury Junior High School, their support staff. I did include, if you're curious, seven new teaching FTEs. I know that's still, we're still working on that, where they're actually all going, going to shake out, but, uh, hopefully that is a pretty close estimate of the number of new teachers that we would hire, um, because of these changes next year. Another big thing is benefits. Uh, wanted to, the one I'm just calling out, uh, of course, we've talked about, uh, health insurance, we're just getting the final rates. Actually, I'm hoping to hear back from Select Health next week and so I can kind of finalize those for everybody. But the big one I wanted to make you all aware of, because I don't know that I've told you as board members, because you are eligible, of course, to, uh, enroll in benefits as well. But we will be switching from EMI in dental to, Delta Dental will now be our, um, insurer. That's gonna start in September, so everybody who signs up for our dental plan will be getting a new, uh, card from this new provider. But that was the recommendation of the insurance committee was to, to switch there. Maybe I can address your question, Emily. I, well, maybe you don't have one, but I, while you're here, I'll tell you from the committee, we did look into, uh, Delta Dental, they have a couple of different plans out there. We've heard some things from some dentists. And from what we've heard, the plan that we have is their best one that, uh, that they offer, so hopefully that helps, um. One of, just so you all know, one of the reasons we looked at this is, uh, our broker came back and they ran a history of all the, uh, claims that we've submitted from, from our plan, looked at all the different providers out there, all the different dentists, we'll say. And, uh, Delta Dental actually had the highest percentage of covered dentists, um, within our area, so. That was one of the big decisions that led, uh, to making the change in our insurance committee. With that, you can see on the health insurance, what was proposed is certified and administrative, we've kind of broke these into two categories. That one, um, the insurance increase is being passed along to employees, meaning their wages went up, um, enough to cover that. Uh, support professionals, the district will pick that, uh, increased cost up, so. Some other things that we included in there, um, specifically with the opening of two new schools, of course, we included the increases we've talked about for utility expenses. We did make sure we have given the new schools supply budgets and other things like other schools, uh, um, and even increased the custodial supplies per the director's recommendation there. Just one thing that maybe it'll surprise you, because we had ribbon cutting, but I wanted to make sure you knew, there's still, uh, nine point one million dollars in there in construction costs, as you can see in capital projects fund. That is just to make sure it covers everything now. Um, because we are still getting bills from the, the, um, main contractor on that, you know, they have to withhold some and make sure everything is, is to our standards, and so it just takes months to get all the bills paid and everything finalized and some of that will be in fiscal year twenty-six, so. We did a good look at it and we feel like, uh, based on the budgets they have given us, that, that's enough to make sure we'll have enough funds in there to cover everything remaining, um, for the two new schools. But overall, if you're just looking at the construction object co, that's the four hundreds in the report there and, and in capital projects, you'll see that it's greatly been reduced. That's because we just don't have as many, won't have as many construction projects next year. So, uh, the last one I wanted to-
May I ask quickly on that point? Great, greatly reduced overall. It's not a surprise to us, right? I mean, it's not as though, boy, we, we did have thirty million in there and now we only need nine point one. It's, it's, it's not a surprise to us. We knew that, but you're just simply calling out the fact that, hey, you know, we just don't need as much money in there anymore. Is that right?
Spot on, yeah.
Okay.
Well worth it, thank you.
Thank you.
Last bullet, bullet point I had on there, I don't think we've, I've talked to you about this, um, cause, uh, we were under the impression uh, when it came to student numbers and staffing, that child nutrition could be absorbed somewhat like we've talked about with teachers, that as students move, there'll be less meals to serve and therefore there could be some cost savings in there. Uh, after talking to our child nutrition director, we had to change that. He felt like they needed a full staff like the other schools and so, um, that was one thing we haven't talked about. That's why I put that dollar figure in there. You can see a four hundred and forty thousand dollars, um, for additional, um, staff for these, uh, two new schools. And so, uh, we'll look at it a little bit later in the fund level when we get to child nutrition.
Lark, could, I just have better clarification. I'm, I'm struggling to understand if they're feeding less students. The number of hours at those schools feels like that should be a rate, a, can, a linear equation that says if I'm feeding a thousand students, it takes ten FTEs. If I'm feeding five hundred students, it takes five FTEs. The idea that we're gonna keep ten FTEs and we've lost these students and then we're gonna bring a new staff on, I'm, I'm struggling to understand that. And maybe you could make an argument that could say, well, maybe we need one manager as a net increase, but the, if you will, that frontline staff, I'm struggling on that assumption. And that's four hundred thousand dollars. That, that's fairly significant.
And I wouldn't mind, I know we, we're in the process of hiring a new director and that could be something we could ask them to have a second look at. I know just in our rush to get it together, we wanted to build in enough just in case. I, I do know the quick conversation I had was, the feeling was, no, they still need those hours for the meal preparation, therefore we need to, I'm copying. But I do want to look to see if there is cost savings in there.
Sure, but they're preparing less.
So.
Well, yeah, I'm very interested in that too, because I would assume it would go down like Scott did. The only thing I can think of is that it may not change the amount of meals they serve that much, because for instance, like Stansbury High can only fit so many kids through and then the rest of them just find a new plan. So maybe they're anticipating that they'll still have that many, uh, cause they'll fit, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be a good project to research. So. Thanks, and, uh, like I said, we'll talk about that in the funds and, and I do plan on having that conversation. I know Ian's here, he's gonna supervise that employee, so we'll, we'll give him a fun project right out of the gate. So. Um, some other notable changes, these are things that I, I just wanted to point out, because we felt like we needed to build them in. This, this top bullet point, we already talked about negotiations, but that was just to, to verify that we um, did increase educator salary adjustment and the TSSA salary. We looked at that this year. Um, and includes everything in that negotiated agreement. Um, the second bullet point, you can see my, uh, what I underlined there, that is an unfunded, unfunded mandate. Uh, we have not been given new funding for that, but it is a legislative requirement and, uh, and that, uh, I did talk to Bob, who's our, um, district, uh, security, talked to him about how that was divided up, because, uh, we needed, my understanding, ten thousand dollars for these assessments for guardians, and his feeling is we also needed to, this is a new expense for us. I'm not used to buying ammunition, uh, from a district level, but we need to buy ammunition so that they can get certified in this area, so these are definitely unfunded mandates, so. And then you can see the other positions that we listed on there that we've talked about needing to add, uh, I did want to call out the teen center, because that has been a priority for you all, and so we made sure we, we built that in to make sure it was, uh, staffed at Desert Peak. Alright, then with that, I thought, why don't we actually get into the fund level? So if I actually had the PDF up here, what I send you, as you know, that I have, every single page is a different fund. And of course, uh, the majority of our transactions are gonna be run through our general fund. Um, so some of the things I did in building this is we maxed out the levies and property taxes. What I mean by that is levies typically float down as you have new growth, um, so it takes less, the rate can be lower to generate the same amount of revenue, if that makes sense, because you have more, uh, taxable value out there. Um, with that, uh, realizing that this isn't one of those funds that I talked about that was bleeding, I've always tried to make sure we do what we can for the general fund and so I maxed out, um, our property tax levies in there. What that means is the two specific ones in there is, um, our board local and our voted local. Um, so the voted is staying at the point zero zero one six and the board, uh, is at the point zero zero two five. I won't add in that it further gets complicated with a charter school that's part of that, but you, you'll get the drift. They're, they're, they're maximum amount by law. So I, I max those out. You can see that we made sure we build in the, the revenue increases from the state, which of course is the majority of that. Uh, we assume, you can see the assumption there that federal, uh, would carry forward. I know there's been some people who feel like we may get less in federal revenue, but, uh, we just built it in as if it was last year, um, hoping that that continues to come through as it always has. With that, when you add in all those new revenues and add in the new expenditures that we talked about, you can see some two, if I would have actually done that and come through the wash, it'd actually been better when we were talking about. Maybe you remember us talking about four to five million dollars of, of surplus that we would use, and we were actually lower than that. That's not a bad thing, I think that's a good thing. Um, and so because of that, uh, you can see the expenses increased because we had some wiggle room from what I had anticipated and talked to you about. I thought maybe this is a good time to move some expenditures back from, um, that we had moved over to Fund Thirty-two when things were difficult. And so with that, that's why I moved textbooks back to the general fund and buses, as you can see in there. That's what ends up, uh, the use of fund balance at four point four million, um, hopefully is a reasonable number from, for you from what we've been talking about over the past few months. That's the general fund in a, at a high level. Um, with that, I thought I'd just call out the major ones. Of course, there's other funds, but debt service is pretty easy one, because it just covers our, our, uh, general obligation bonds out there. Um, that one's always a balanced budget. Our capital projects, um, by maximizing, if you maximize property tax in one fund, you gotta pull from another. Well, the only other levy we have is the capital, uh, local levy and so that's why the revenues were decreased in there. It's assuming I'm maxing out everything in our general fund and, and so, any decisions we make from this point forward will go towards the capital, um, capital projects.
Lark, on, on that one, I have some questions.
Okay.
So, if I'm reading this right, and I'm probably not, but I swear I need your help or maybe somebody else's, is that it shows that that bottom bullet point there's, or it says results in a proposed loss or use of fund balance of eighteen million dollars. What I'm interpreting that to mean is that we're spending eighteen million dollars more than we're taking in, in that area.
That is correct.
And is that ongoing? Because we've got some items in there that are ongoing. This, this is, I guess, is that loss due to construction? Which we understood, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna lower that. That was always the- Which we understood. I mean, we're going to, we're going to lower that. That was always the intention. Or or is this to because of we 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 added debt payments and technology to this? And and those are ongoing expenses. So what what is our ongoing shortage? I guess is what I'm trying to ask.
Good question. Of course, construction is going to vary from year to year, but if you back out that nine million in there expenditures, it would show that we were short in revenues of of nine million is a good way of looking at it.
So on aggregate,
Nine plus.
So we're nine million dollars short in capital and we're four point four million dollars short in general. Because I think our constituents aren't so worried about which bucket it's in. They just like looking at the total bucket. So am I to understand then that we're we're running a deficit of thirteen point four million dollars?
Yeah, that would be a good, good way of looking at it. Just adding those up.
That
There's another deficit we can talk about in just a minute on, because there's actually a third fund we need to talk about now, and that could be food service. But yeah. Adding our major funds, that's that's a good way of putting it.
I I think that up until tonight, I was under the impression it was significantly less than thirteen million dollars. And maybe the rest of the board wasn't, but the idea that we're we're overspending thirteen million dollars a year. I thought we were more along the lines of seven, and I thought that a tax increase would
Cover us.
Would cover us and get us, right. I mean, if we're overspending thirteen million dollars a year, a seven million dollar tax increase doesn't balance the budget. What, I mean, what what, help me.
Yeah, I, in the short term, yes. I believe our intent was when we talked about using reserves, at least my intent, if I didn't explain this well, was that it was going to be a multi, it's going to take multiple years. Meaning that we would need to look at similar things next year. When we get the new revenue from the state, same thing, looking at our our property tax. The hope is that over time, the water will continue to come, if that makes sense, flow up until we're, we're able to tell that.
That was that plan that you presented last year when we were talking about the tax, that happened in the budget meeting. Now that you say that, it was a multiple year thing, but I think this year, the last few meetings, I agree.
Three and four months, we've been talking about a budget deficit of nine, seven to nine. I've never heard a thirteen point four million dollar deficit.
Emily, sorry.
Just want to make sure I'm on the right track. I asked Lark about this the the other day, and this seems like what we talked about. That the the four point four and that fund, that's kind of been the thing that we've been focusing on in a lot of our meetings. And that number has gone down. But if we're looking at all funds, then we talked about twelve the other day, but it's really closer to thirteen of a general thing. That the seven point seven that allows us to hold that same basic payment that everybody has to the school district right now. It's makes a significant jump, but does not get us out of the situation. We would need to rely on future WPU growth, property tax growth due to new businesses or other things like that, or future tax raises. Is that a correct summary?
Yeah, yeah, it'll take future years.
But understanding that if WPU increases, I guess from the state, the idea behind that, or what we always use that for, was teacher salary increases. So I get, I don't know if we're putting teachers on notice now. There is no increase next year.
Teacher salaries or if we have growth of student body, that's our FTEs.
But but if that's the case, if we hold FTEs, then class size goes up.
Right.
I mean, those are what we're talking about even for next year.
Right.
And correct me if I'm wrong, when you talk about WPU is like this year, they didn't
The unfunded mandates.
There's unfund mandates, but also the like the governor just gave the teacher raises, didn't really put it any into the WPU. Is that correct? Like, there wasn't a lot of WPU money.
One note about the WPU that maybe some people aren't aware of is that it used to be every year they'd say, ah, how much are we going to give education this year? And it was like zero or ten or whatever. But now it there is in that amendment G that it was made so that it's it's a inflationary measure that they have to give us.
But the problem is it's only inflation. And so in theory, all that does is hold us equal to pay our power bill and our
Right.
water bill and our
And it doesn't cover unfunded mandates or the removal of funds such as like the Shine program where they didn't fund it to the same level as they had the previous program. Or, you know, they're, they take away things here and there. Yeah, it doesn't count for that. So it's not a good way to get out of a hole. You're correct.
I I just, I I don't, I know in the last, since this this calendar year, we have not talked about thirteen point four million dollar deficit.
We we did last summer, but then we stopped talking about it.
Yeah. That's a problem.
Does it does it matter that we're talking about debt service and capital project funds? I know, I know, Scott, what you're saying is overall, what does this really do for us? Debt services up there, capital projects.
So Todd, from from my perspective, those are fun, those are at a high level. I'm just looking at ongoing dollars and that depth debt service is something that we're going to see every year because we owe that MBA bond that we use to cover the school shortfall. And so that's always going to be there. And the other one was, what was the other one you asked about? Technology. Well, I mean, we could say we're done with technology. We're not going to, we're not, no more computers and we're done. And that would stop that. But otherwise, it's every year we've been following a a rotation of computers and stuff. So Todd, I guess I'm looking at it, I don't care if it's capital operating, what are our ongoing expenses?
Right.
Compared, and that's why I factor out the, yeah, the nine million for school buildings. That, we knew that. But the thirteen ongoing is a big deal.
Agreed. And just as a reminder, I mean, I'm not saying it's not a tough pill to swallow. I I get the frustrations. It it, we we have said that this was going to be a trying time over the next few years from a financial perspective. I did want to point out those last two bullet points, so you see where I was coming from. We did know that we could build, finish building the schools and fulfill our commitment and drain most of our capital reserves. That was an option on the table, but the reason we issued those MBA bonds, as you recall, was to make sure we had sufficient funds in here to do exactly what we're proposing. And that's just to make sure you had some money to to draw down on in there. Now, the reason I point that out is you can see the worst case scenario from that budget I gave you, we would still have fifty four million dollars roughly in fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty six. I say worst case scenario because we make sure capital projects can cost lots of money and and sometimes there's a lot of fallout in there. And I'm just looking at what we have fallout from this year's current budget from what we had projected. And and you can see that difference between the worst case of fifty four and what I believe will be closer to eighty is because I believe we're going to have that much fallout from this year. So we're, we're not going to spend all the the dollar figures that we had in there. Whether that be uncompleted projects or we just over budgeted for certain things, there there will be some fallout from that. So.
This is our surplus fund. Is that correct? This is our fund balance. Yes, yes. So that's good news.
Yeah.
That we're going to, I mean, I, glass half full.
Sure, if we can get twenty six million dollars every year.
So, 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 Lark.
But I don't think that's an income stream.
No. So I have a question that I think our constituents will be asking us.
Okay.
And I'm not saying you're going to have the answer to this, and it's just something that we've got to address with our constituents. Because we get this question, how can we be spending thirteen million dollars more than we're bringing in? And so, you know, and people that don't, and I don't want to say this like callously, that don't understand education are going to be like, stop living outside your means. But but that's what they're going to say. We're living outside of our means. I mean, if we were obviously running our household, I mean, we, everyone, all the criticisms we get, if it's an email coming, they say, if I can't afford to buy the car, I'm not going to buy the car. And we're out of options to take out loans now. And so this is obviously something as a board, you know, district staff. How, and sure, there's this thing in place called raising taxes in the next month or in the, you know, in the next few months that can happen, but even if we did raise to the full amount, that that is ongoing fund, so that would help. But I think our, your estimation is a, like, the most we could get for raising taxes would be seven million.
That's not, we can raise taxes to the fourteen or thirteen point four. Seven million keeps our tax to our tax constituents even. But if we want to solve the
Yeah, I agree.
I am not suggesting real clear disclaimer here.
Okay, for some reason.
But we could raise taxes, fourteen million dollars, problem solved.
Okay, yes, we, okay. Thank you for helping me understand that because remember, like, you guys, I've said it a million times. Figuring out budgets and taxes, we didn't go to school board school to know this. So thank you. This is why some of these questions are tricky and hard, but okay, I I thought there was a limit on the amount we could raise.
There is, but it was high, wasn't it? Like, anyway.
Okay.
Just to, the the reason that we chose that is because we were hoping to keep everyone's tax bills approximately the same for the school portion.
For the school portion. Okay.
That that was why we chose that amount. And to 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 explore, not to choose.
Exactly. And I could look at that. I could email you a kind of a maximum amount to if you want at the end. To answer your question, you know, that is going to be difficult one. If if you're looking at it from an income statement perspective, revenues minus expenditures, yeah, that that's tough to explain. But I guess because I liked your example, you're explaining this to people who have a household budget. They're they're dealing with their own household income. And the best explanation of what we're doing is we have been smart for years and set aside some savings. And sure, we're drawing on that savings. It's one time funds. Don't get me wrong. It, that means, but we're doing that in hopes that if if you were using this as an example for a household budget, that your salary increases over the future will make up for what you've been drawing on savings. That's a simple way of saying what we're we're doing in this case.
The 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 challenge, though, is the assumptions of the the salary increase, to continue analogy, are probably a house of cards at best. Because the the assumptions are WPU increases, which is probably not going to happen. It's, I, I mean, that that's where the challenge comes in. And Melissa, to answer your question, if you want to know where the fifteen million dollars go, and I is, and and I'm not saying we shouldn't have done it, but the reality is most of our expenses are labor. If if push comes to shove, most of our expenses are labor. And, you know, when I was first on the board, we were thirty fifth or the bottom two percent of the, in in teacher pay. And and we were the bottom of the bottom of teacher pay in our district. Now we're in the top, what, five, right? And so the reality of the matter is, is that we have given significant pay raises to our staff disproportionate to what any other district in this state has given and and significantly different. I'm not saying that's bad or good. But how did we get ourselves in this situation? Is we've been, we have dramatically increased our salaries to our teachers without a funding mechanism. And as a result of that, we have to take a hard look and say, are, and and that's, you know, next year, whatever. But we maybe really need to revisit some of those labor costs. And and not only are we paying more, our head counts have increased significantly in some areas, which, again, I I'm not debating, but but what's changed? Why are we thirteen million dollars overspending? One other, which we we can talk about, is technology. You know, when I was first on the board, it, the idea was only a dream of of computer, one to one devices, and that was just a, you know, that was a a dream, right? I I, is that a requirement still? And it's fine if it is, but at some point, as a board, we have to prioritize those and say, if we're going to live in our means, we're, we're, we're going to have to, something's going to have to hurt. And and the hurt might be that you're willing to say, we're going to pay the, the taxpayers are going to hurt and we're going to raise the taxes and the taxpayers are going to hurt. And and if we're saying no to that, then we're going to say, then we're going to have a reduction in force and we're going to decrease the headcount of teachers and therefore the classroom sizes are going to increase. Or we're going, I mean, tho- those are the kind of consequences, or we're going to have a dramatic pay cut for teachers and the starting salary on teachers is going to go down by ten thousand dollars a year. And all of our lane schedules are going to be readjusted. I mean, those are really ridiculously.
Those, those, that's, that's, we probably shouldn't like throw out things because we don't know.
No, but but the point is, that's how we got here.
That's how we got here. Yes. Emily and then Valerie.
Sure, yeah. I wanted to understand a little bit more because I've been pushing you to do an all in macro type thing. But I do recall, this is where my institutional memory does not exist, about the the capital reserve, and you're talking about the fifty four, eighty, all those kind of things, that I recall you saying something in the past about that before you got here, we didn't have this generous of 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 a reserve in the capital. Is that a true thing that's been said?
Yes.
Okay.
They haven't always had that much money.
Okay. And it's so, as far as the general fund goes, that's definitely a panic button thing. And then we do this thing where we move the money back and forth. And that also worries me because I can never tell, you will so, how bad is it? But as far as it goes, the amount of money we have in capital reserves, how much of it is standard across school districts in Utah? How much of it is us trying to, you know, be the best savers that we can possibly be? I, I'm just trying to gauge the level of panic in that fund.
Okay. I haven't looked at it in a few years, but maybe this would be a good one to go and see the most recent data we have for other districts. As far as do it, sometimes we've done a fund balance comparison to see where we're at.
Well, of course, we want to do the best we can at making sure we have a nice, healthy reserve fund, but if if, you know, we're just have a lot more than is average, maybe that's not a a panic place. But to your point, we have ongoing funds. We can't keep dipping and keep dipping and keep dipping.
One place we could, I mean, just throw it, again, is with that much money, that that is the MBA bond amount, and we could pay off the MBA bond, done with it, and now we don't have that. That debt service, which is four million dollars a year, three million dollars a year of debt service for the MBA bond. And there's a four million dollar win. And so instead of dipping into it slowly, we could take fifty million dollars, pay off the MBA bond, and we just saved ourselves four million dollars a year moving forward.
The debt service.
Yeah. Excuse me, Valerie's up. And then, do you have your line?
Okay. Okay, so first of all, in this number fifty four million, and then you said you're hopeful it's more like eighty million. When will we know that?
The financial statements when we give them to you. You know, they're, I'll have a good estimate in in July when we've reconciled everything.
Okay, so so to make up for, I mean, our hope as a board was to not tax people out of their homes. So we're talking about holding the rate, but also keeping keeping it so there, so taxes aren't being raised so much. So let's say, you know, we use that and then you're hopeful that the WPU might go up, but might probably won't. And then we go into reserves. How many years of doing that until we have a balanced budget?
You know, Um, you know, maybe the best way to answer that is it can vary from year to year. I'm not trying to make light of it, but every, all these tough decisions you're talking about is something, there's actually all options are on the table. It's how far, what do we feel like collectively, um, deciding upon? Because I point that, because an answer could be, cut thirteen million dollars. I'm not saying that's easy, and it, uh, but that could be an answer. You've gotta do something. Um, and to reset it, I, I wanna maybe publicly say, hopefully this doesn't get printed in the paper. I'm looking over at Tim. But we've had conversations and have seen this coming. Uh, there will be people in the public who will say, well, how are you in this situation? How do you have ongoing funds that, they feel like you're overcommitted? And most people will go back to online students. All these people, they will say, because you're living off of online students. I've heard people call it a cash cow. I've heard other things. We are readjusting. I'm not saying it's, it's gonna be easy. Hopefully, you've heard that many times, that it was gonna be hard. Um, if so, I haven't done a good job of communicating that. And, and that's why we're where we're at. I, I personally, the reason I'm talking about it is because I feel like drawing on the reserves is, is one way of, as some people like to say, it's raining, um, is one way of, is kind of an easy transition without making large cuts and, and, uh, you know, affecting people. But all cards are on the table. I'm actually not offended at any of the ideas that have been thrown out. Believe me, I'm not offended at them. I think we look at all ideas, and we gotta collectively, I know it's hard to do in a public meeting, but we have to collectively say, well, what do we feel comfortable doing together as a team? Because it, it's gonna take all of us, yeah.
Okay, Bob, and then back to Emily.
Well, I, I think-
Oh, did that, yes.
I think, I think Valerie's question, you know, is, it's hard, it's hard to answer. How long this, you know, how long will it take us to recover, you know? The problem is, is, is you look at the fund balance, it's not sustainable if you have year after year of those type of deficits. You know, as we talk about WPU, one of the problems that we've got into a WPU is the inflationary rate. Because a lot of times, when the legislature gives the inflation rate, they think, well, we've just helped you out. Well, no, they really haven't helped you out. They're just helping you break even on your expenses. I mean, Elizabeth and Emily and I sat in, uh, a delegate assembly, uh, Saturday, it seems like, a long time ago. Saturday, and they talked about a two percent, you know, can we get two percent above inflation? You know, but the problem is, as of late, and, and I think we have to take this into consideration, a lot of times, those things come out with unfunded mandates, or they target part of that WPU to go to a special program. And so, you know, I think that's what we have to, you know, it's hard, I understand that, because it's, you're actually thinking, okay, what's, three years from now, what does this look like? Well, that's a crystal ball timeframe, you know? But I think we have to look at the sustainability of our, of our reserves.
Good point.
Um, I-
Maybe I could add, oh, sorry.
Sure.
I was gonna, because I probably answered it poorly, and you can just tell me that, Valerie. Sorry, couldn't see if, if you thought it was poorly. But to answer your question, just to give you a high-level example, if we got an eight percent WPU next, next year, we could probably be out of that four point four million dollars in the general fund. If it ends up being closer to a four, it might take two to three years. Just, just throwing out some high-level numbers based on what's happened this year. Of course, you have the op, you know, property tax is something you, you get to weigh and look at every year, uh, what you wanna do there. But that's just to give you a one, um, yeah. Probably better way of answering it.
Okay, um, Todd, I don't believe you've had a turn, uh, back to Emily, uh, Dr. Ernst, and then back to Scott. Does that sound okay?
I wanted to ask, uh, why we had to do another math calculation to get to the thirteen million? Because as I looked through this, I didn't see the thirteen. I think I was under the same impression, seven to nine. Do you see what I'm asking? And so, I'm wondering if when you present the information, it seems like every month, we have a new recommendation or a, a request here, uh, so apologies for that. But I, I wonder if we could just simply call it, you know, a- again, in, in layman's terms here, you know, just, are we overspending or underspending, uh, our budget? What does that look like? Just so we don't have to do the gymnastics of simple math, probably, just to get to that thirteen million. I think, uh, Scott was caught off guard with thirteen million. I know I was. And just getting caught off guard is, is concerning, right, obviously? So, again, I, I don't know, does, is the request reasonable? Is that something you can do? Or maybe I'm not looking at this carefully enough to see the thirteen million that is just wide open. Everyone should be able to see that.
Gotcha. Yeah. Sorry, maybe you can, uh, give me more direction to hold the line a little bit better. I, I really tried to build in every, every request that I had into this. Uh, not every request, but the majority of what's built in, and sure, that, that's higher. I mean, there's, like I said, we could be tighter. We could just simply say no to certain things. Um, I don't know how else to put it, other, I mean, a lot of this, the reason I focus on the general fund, I'll be honest with you, is because capital projects, um, is one that you can, is, fluctuates a lot. And, uh, and as you can see, I put in there that we, we had everything in the readings earlier, that we felt like you approved. I mean, literally, if, if it was to cut things, we're going back to those, that reading we had, and we're cutting out projects at that point, so.
Yeah, and, and that helps explain a little bit of, of it, general versus the capital projects. And you felt that that might need to be a bigger focus for us than looking at the capital. Is that, um, did, did I interpret what you just said accurately?
Yeah, maybe we need to spend more time looking at capital, um, next year. Um, I know that's difficult, because we've got a report from, um, that we've, we've, uh, looked at of a lot of needs in capital. Um, and that's, that's a hard one, because there's a lot of needs out there, but we're also limited on funds. So, it, it's, you know, it is gonna be some hard conversations from year to year, yeah.
All right, thanks. I hope my request wasn't too much to add on to this, but just when, you know, thirteen is now the number, for some reason, there was a disconnect in my mind. And either, if you could educate me on that and say, Todd, you, you need to look at this, uh, or, or make this a little more, uh, just bottom-line constituents, what would they be wanting to know? Maybe that would be a, a way to think about that a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
We, we can talk more, maybe. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Yeah.
But, Dr. Ernst?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to reiterate, uh, what, what Board Member Ryan said, in, in that decision, and this is, I, I speak this not as disparaging toward any, anyone. But in the past, we were not living within our means. We had this money coming in. It was soft money. The money went away. Now, all of a sudden, we have this money. What we're trying to do now is live within our means. And so, I, I just think that's so important to, for our public to know, our teachers to know, that, uh, we, we were spending, we were spending money that, yes, we had, but it wasn't money that we probably should, we shouldn't have been relying on that money as constant income. Where we're living on our overtime, and the overtime got cut. And unfortunately, we, we built our mortgage and our car payments and all of that based on overtime. Well, now the overtime's gone, and we've gotta try to live within our means. So, that's what we're doing now. All of these adjustments we're making is so we are fiscally conservative, and we are fiscally accountable to the taxpayers, and we are living within our means. And I think that's a very important concept that people need to understand, that these tough decisions that we're doing now is based on decisions of the past, where we were not living within our means, and now we're, now we are riding the ship.
Let, let me throw this out, just for what it's worth. If we were to increase taxes by seven point five or seven point seven million, if we were to take that fifty million dollars of capital and pay off our MBA bond, that would save us four million dollars a year.
George is bringing us down to only a two million dollar shortage.
Now, we're only two million, I don't want, two million dollars is a lot of money. But, but if we were to do both of those, kind of strategically high-level, i- if we were to increase taxes by seven and a half million dollars, ish, pay, pay off our MBA bond, using the fifty more, fifty million dollars of capital reserves, that saves us four million. Now, we're down to eleven and a half million, eleven and a half from the thirteen, four. We're about two million dollars short. Two million dollar shortage, to me, starts to feel like, yeah, I could see that doable even with WPU's and some other things, right? That, that feels like it's not this massive elephant. At that point, we're down to just a manageable task. A- a- and honestly, even with the challenge to the district, that, that maybe we come back and we find a million dollars in savings by this time next year, right? I mean, and it becomes another, I know we've got, you've got your moonshot, but maybe can we shoot for the, I don't know, what's below the moon, you know? But, but a little bit of, we gotta get a million dollars out or something, you know, I mean-
It's a, it's an academic moonshot.
Yeah.
But we can, we can have a fiscal moonshot as well.
But, but, I mean, if, and we could say that's, or, or better yet, could we get to two? And then we're even better off. But to me, that feels so much better than to say we're short. I mean, that four million dollar bogey from the MBA bond, and knowing that we actually have that money now in capital, I realize it pretty much shoots the wad there, but we still have a, we do have a fund reserve in the general fund still. And then we can work on building that back up and start over. But we're not hitting ourselves. It's continuing on the overtime analogy doctrine, which is spot-on, perfect. What we did, and we had to do, but we had to go buy a car, let's pay the car off. So, at least we don't have the car payment, right? And, in kind of that analogy, and that's what we had to do to finish those schools. I, I, I'm not, I, I, this is not money-mongering quarterback. We, we had to do that. But we didn't know we had fifty-four million dollars in, in a capital fund balance. And if Lark's right, and it's eighty million dollars, and we still come out with a-
Makes me feel better.
With a thirty. I, I'm just throwing that out as an idea, and maybe that's a strategic thing that makes me feel a whole lot better than thirteen million overspending. Now, we're down to two million overspending a thought.
I was just, um, in, maybe that's, those are some numbers that I think we need to shore up and, and make sure that, uh, our numbers are good, and we can have Mr. Reynolds, uh, get those for us.
Sorry, I changed my mind. I was up, and then I turned off my light and turned it back on. Um, I don't think we really delved into this whole fifty-four versus eighty. How do we not know about the twenty-six million?
How do you not know?
I mean, okay, it shows that we would anticipate, having reserves of fifty-four million after all this, you believe it would be closer to eighty million. So, what's the twenty-six million dollar discrepancy?
Um, can I show you?
Yes.
Because I'm a visual person. This may be dangerous here. This is my, uh, here's why I think we do. I know we got, uh, some bills that we still need to pay for our school construction, but this is just bringing in all expenditures in Fund Thirty-two, which is our, uh, that's what I get for doing it live and making a mistake. Sorry, everybody. It was on there, and I didn't click it. All right. I'm bringing in all expenditures in here. We had budgeted to spend a hundred and nine. We've only spent sixty-seven point five million. I know we still have, I mean, our construction bills, we, we should have at least two more probably on, um, in this fiscal year for, uh, I'm just talking about our highest bills that we'll see in this fund, um, from the construction. I'm looking over at Mike, see if he thinks I'm ballpark figure here, maybe. By the time you add in Stansbury Junior High and Desert Peak, uh, maybe seven million, so fifteen at the most. I think there's gonna be lots of fallout. I'll just leave it at that. Fifteen, twenty million.
Okay, so when you look at all the fund balances and say, what is a nice fund balance to have? Yeah, maybe add in some of those items.
Does that stress you out, to take fifty million out of the fund balance and pay it off?
That's, that's what I'm asking about.
There's, there's two sides to it. Yeah, yes, because it's nice to have the cash there if you need it. That's the only reason I hesitate. I mean, but yes, if you wanna be able to say that, hey, we're saving interest costs, pay off some debt now, that could be positive. But me personally, it's sure nice to have those reserves in there in case you need it.
Like an air conditioning going out, or a something, like a building, something, roof?
But, but if we're closer to eighty.
So, could you let us know how much we would save by doing that? What would we save in interest?
If we paid off the MBA bond?
Well, that's not- No, that's not what I'm asking.
Oh.
If we paid off the MBA all-in-one lump sum, like Scott said, versus if we continue to pay on it yearly, how much would we save doing that? First of all, that's my first question.
Okay.
And then, it, I'm assuming there's no, like, state requirement of how much there needs to be in reserves?
No, they have a, there's a, an entity called GFOA, Government, Governmental Financial Officers Association. They have a recommendation, um, I've always been told that is your operating fund for capital, because it's for your capital needs. It, it can vary. I don't know that I've ever seen actually a recommendation for capital projects, but let me research that. Because I, I don't know that I've seen one for capital projects, yeah.
Okay, so you're seeing there is a, probably a recommendation. You don't know what that is, but there is not an actual requirement.
Yeah, their recommendation, we've always been told, is two months' worth of expenditures. You wanna make sure you have, you know, two months' worth of expenditures in there, is their best practice, which I like to round up, so that's why I say, I think if you actually did the math on it, that's sixteen or seventeen percent. I like to just round up to twenty percent. A good, uh, shooting goal for that.
But if we take it to ten, and then we can build up overtime, at least we're not over to that other.
But how are we gonna build it if we're in a deficit?
It, it's the same way as if we were trying to cut that deficit spending. I mean, it, it's either or. What we have to do is have fiscal self-control when those WPU's come in. We don't say, oh, we just got WPU, and we can shoot the wad wherever. We have to say, and we're gonna do it this way. And part of it is to build up our fund.
To be clear, I like your idea, but I feel like I need more information.
Sorry, I, it was a harebrained, just like, but I, I, I'm just trying to find a way. I, I can tell you this, if I'm talking to my constituents, the idea that we're, neither of them's good. But the idea that I'm, if I'm saying to them that we're overspending thirteen million dollars a year, or I'm, we're overspending two million dollars a year, two million dollars a year is a dramatically more palatable to our constituents.
Yeah.
And then, and then it becomes a goal that we can actually bite off. I, I, you know, it becomes that financial moonshot, whatever, but I, I feel like we can get there.
It feels more doable.
Yeah, I know, I, thirteen to me is like, we're never gonna get there.
Wow, Lark, yours is the only light left. So, I, oh, sorry, Emily has a question.
You had something to say, you should say it. Maybe I'll change what I'm gonna say.
Oh, I was just gonna continue with the slides, but, oh, okay. You got another question?
No, I was gonna say, and, and I recognize this might be difficult, because the board is different every other year, and also, um, the appetite for, for tax increases is what's going on in the world, what's going on in our community. Um, but would it be possible, as a board with Lark's help, to create a plan to say, this is roughly how we would be able to get out of this and how much time? To say, these are the actions that we would take, and, I mean, the only thing that I worry about is, is we couldn't really hold ourselves to the plan if future boards didn't like it. But, I mean, but it would be sure nice to have something to look at. What do you think of that, everyone?
I just like it that there's a plan. I know that even over the years, there's, you know, even right now, that we're trying to develop a building-
you know, even right now, that we're trying to develop a building plan of what, you know, and sure, that does depend on if the public passes bonds in the future too, we only, you know, but the plan is there as a guide for us, so I, I really like that. Bob?
I like, I like the plan, Emily, and I think if we could at least start moving towards that direction to answer some of those questions, that's great. But there's, there's a lot of those variables that go into that plan that are always unsure from year to year. And, you know, WPU being one of those, you know? So I think, I think you just have to do your best guess or your best estimate.
Could we have like a highly conservative plan? To say at worst-case scenario, barring, yeah, the financial moonshot.
Elizabeth?
I am sure and confident that Lark has this plan in his mind, but we just don't know it spelled out for us.
Okay.
I'm taking notes, so, thank you. As far as the other funds, I put them all on one slide, just jumping through them really quick. And the colored one behind you there, um, just go high to low. Our student activities, this is the, um, fees is the main source of revenue in this one from, at the school level. Basically, for next year, we rolled forward the budgets. Um, on that, you can see they were, they looked a lot smaller in that working column because we, we made a budget adjustment. I did feel like they were doubled last time. Um, if you're actually looking at the detailed things, you'll notice they were much smaller, but we just rolled that forward into twenty-five. If you're curious why we transfer in four hundred thousand dollars in there each year, that is to cover fee waivers, which I'm going to have my team look, make sure that's a good estimate, so more details to come on that. Tax increment will always balance, that's revenue we, we never see, but we report. And then the food service, where I'll spend most of the rest of the time because the foundation is also a balanced budget after we transfer in three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per our agreement with them. So food service, not only did we have the new positions that I talked about earlier, food costs have just been going up. Speaking of inflation, maybe some of you have noticed that as you've been buying food for your, for yourself. Uh, so we did increase food costs by five hundred thousand dollars in, in this budget for next year. So with five hundred thousand dollars in food increases and, uh, and the new positions, that's what results in this one million dollar use of fund balance or, or loss that we're talking about in the food service fund. So that is one we'll, we'll be talking about in the future. So, um, where do we go from here? Uh, well, next week, we have scheduled our budget hearing. You can see my question on there. That's why I'm kind of smiling because this is your chance to tell me what you want to see changed between now and, and a version two for, uh, next week. This is kind of our first high dive in a public meeting where we can talk about it together and ask questions. So, if you do have some recommendations, let's come back to that top question. Um, but the options that we have for the, for the budget hearing, you can, of course, adopt the one that was presented, this budget is presented for fiscal year twenty-six. And that would be, uh, would not require a truth and taxation, taxation hearing because that's going with a certified tax rate. If the feeling is that we need, we need to look at increasing taxes, you have that option. Um, we can look at increasing the property taxes. As you can see on there, all new revenues though would go to, towards that capital projects fund, but that's easy to explain. I like Scott's thinking of combining the two because they really are related in this particular instance. Yeah. Yeah, so. Um, but that's where it would all go and the whole point is because we've maxed out our, our, by law, the amount we can, that can go to the general fund.
Lark, can I make a comment? And I am very sorry to probably anyone who's going to hear this soapbox again, but I really think it's important and part of it, it's taken me a few years being on the board to figure it out. I mean, I've known now for probably like four solid years of my six years on the board, but then you can see up here, I still have questions and get confused. But as someone mentioned earlier, um, talk about taxes and taxing us out of our homes and so everyone's heard this in this room before, but if someone new is listening, it's worth me saying. And I think as our, as a school board, I had a constituent last year say, looked at me straight in the face and said, Melissa, your job is to figure out how to talk to the legislators about our taxes. Because he didn't understand the property tax issue. And I do feel like it is my job to talk to legislators about the tax situation. I want to remind everyone that the State of Utah Constitution guarantees an equal education for students in the State of Utah. And so they give us the WPU, which is all equal across, but they also put in the property tax to help fund education. We have the, we, our property tax rate, I'm so sorry, here's my soapbox, is three times that of Park City or Summit County, two times that of Salt Lake City. So people are paying less taxes in those counties. As I went to Sam's Club in Salt Lake County today, my tax dollars were being spent. I'm sorry, I do support Silver's and Walmart and Macy's and grocery stores out here too. But probably everyone that's listening does make it in, or a lot of people make it in, and our tax dollars are not coming to our county. And that is the mechanism. There have been states that have been sued because they are not distributing money equally. And the Supreme Court has overturned it and they will be, and they are funded now differently. I'm not suggesting we get sue happy, that's not my point, but I think, I am not sure even especially as our legislators turn over so often. I, I mean, we have a new legislator and then one that's been in, I think, two years now, maybe is on a third term. Do they understand that our tax, we are being taxed so much? And people can say, well, school board, live within your means. Well, we have a similar-sized district to Salt Lake City School District as far as students go. And they spend upwards of twelve thousand dollars per student. We spend upwards of, correct me if I'm wrong, almost only seven thousand. Is it the other way around? Is it close? I'm close. I know when I throw numbers out, I'm off, but it's, it's different. They do spend more because they have more tax revenue, because they have a million businesses. Drive down State Street, drive, go to City Creek, go to any mall. Anyways, if people understood the taxing situation, so our property taxes are so high and we're just trying to barely do what other schools are doing when people come in and talk about, you know, resources. Why don't we have better drama departments? Why don't we have better athletic facilities? Why don't we have better, why aren't our teachers paid as much? Or why don't they, anyways, it goes back to our property taxes. And it is about the kids and we're not trying to tax people out of our homes. We are sitting in our own homes. My taxes went up crazy la, I know everyone's dead. So maybe write your legislators and let them know about our tax situation, that we, our property tax rate is outrageous. Are we living outside our means? Yes, but that online student situation, they prey on districts with low property taxes because it is a cash cow. But we could not keep the contract due to the regulations being put us on us by the state board.
To illustrate what you're saying?
Yes.
That, it does help that, so for instance, uh, Salt Lake County, I mean, City School District, they just passed a bond of seven hundred and thirty million dollars. Our last one was a hundred and ninety million. The average homeowner is only paying twelve dollars a month on that seven hundred and thirty million dollars. So that's what they're able to do.
So on our bond, I think we raised it in, what was it, under twenty dollars a month and we got a hundred and ninety million? And they got seven hundred and thirty million.
Yeah.
So I don't think, I didn't understand that. Anyways, I just think we have to educate our neighbors about this situation, that it's not the school board trying to like raise these taxes and truth and taxation. Anyways, sorry, I apologize. I wanted to bring it up during truth and taxation. I might bring it up again next week during the budget hearing. So, thank you.
Well, the last one on there, and maybe I'll spend a little extra time on it. It's not, well, it's not the very last bullet point, but the second to the last. If you're going to look at truth and taxation, you want to look at a flat, a flat rate strategy is what I like to call it. And I know we did that years ago. We've, we kind of stopped doing that. Let me just explain a pro and a con because there's two ways of looking at it. You can rip the Band-Aid off and increase taxes in one year, which is one philosophy. Or you can have small incremental tax raises. That could be one way of looking at it from year to year, could be one way of floating up, as I said, the waters to eventually rise a little bit at a time versus just all at once. Um, so there are two different ways of looking at it. The reason I think it makes sense, and I'm just going to speak specifically to this year because some of you asked my opinion last year. And, uh, you know, it's, it's tough for me to give, you know your constituents better. I'm probably not the one to always ask on whether you do or, or don't. But last year, the reason I was very hesitant about increasing taxes, as you know, is because of that five million dollar county adjustment that we've spent a lot of time talking about. And raising taxes on top of that was going to be painful to the public, in my opinion. This year, five million dollars is falling off. They will have, they do not have to pay that. It's, it's coming off. The reason a flat rate strategy has worked in the past is because they are usually smaller increments. What you say is that we're leaving the rate the same. Now, because property taxes values usually go up throughout the county, that does generate new revenue. But what you can say with a flat tax is that, if your property value did not change from year to year, you would pay the exact same dollars you would the year before. So what it is capturing is the, the market growth, the valuation. Um, you're basically keeping the rate the same. It is kind of reversing it because property tax, you've heard me, you've all heard my spill. Property tax is based off of revenues. It's the only tax I'm aware of that is like that. Income taxes is usually always based off a rate. So it's basically building it off a rate. So I just threw that out there. That is an option this year. And of course, uh, if you do like to go through truth and taxation, that bottom bullet point is a reminder that we still need to at least adopt the proposed budget as a tentative to get us started until we've held that hearing, received public input and make a final decision upon it. Which you're all familiar with that process. So the last thing I added, which probably may not be in yours, is this, I just wanted to clarify this flat tax strategy. And that's what I had originally been asked to send you an email out with some high-level estimates. Let's see how close these numbers were. So I, uh, the reason it's not an exact number still, as I pointed out, is we don't have the basic school levy. Now, that was the last time I checked as of five o'clock, roughly today. I checked the certified tax rate site, still hasn't been updated. So it, it should, before our next meeting, be updated. Um, but our, my estimate, and the reason I put an estimate is because I just backed out the basic levy and just said if all other levies we kept at that flat tax rate, what would it generate? And you can see the numbers up there. I actually wanted to show you what the advertisement would look like, even though you can see um, that seven point, I'm rounding up, but seven point five million. What would that be on a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar residence versus a business? So I actually generated the ad right off of the, um, tax commission's site. That's why you can see, um, if I highlight it right here, that's the number. I'll guess it's not highlighting. But you get the, that's what they base it off of, is that revenue increase. And it has the values up here on a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar residence versus a home. Now, that looks like, the reason the tax, flat tax has worked in the past is that looks like a lot of money to individuals. And I get it, it, it does. But keep in mind though that their property taxes would have already fallen. So we can't do this with truth and taxation because the law has it read this way. If it was like a bond, for example, because you, those of you who have been through the bonds have heard us talk to, talk about the language that we can put in there. And usually, we have traditionally done that when another bond falls off. So this is a good example, where your debt payment goes down. And we put the maximum amounts in there because we have to, but then we always had this clause that, well, but because we've paid off debt, it'll, it, it looks more like this. We can't do that with truth and taxation, but in theory, that's what would happen this next year.
And so I understand that that can be advertised, but what does that mean, will taxes on an average home, they, they would be flat, they wouldn't go down at all? I mean, with the school district, they would stay flat with this thing. But I guess it would be if the city raised taxes and, but if no one else in the county raised taxes, then their tax bill overall would go down because that other thirty percent isn't, depending on if the taxing entity, okay, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, good point. Those are other entities, yeah.
So it could go down. I know some have already said whether or not they're raising taxes. Okay.
Yep. So, and with that, I think the last thing on my PowerPoint was just if you had any questions. And when I put that up, I mean also directions for a, a version two for, for next week.
My only thought.
Oh, Scott, sorry.
My, my only thought on this ma, on this subject is, next week, let, let's not do what we did last year, okay? We, we, we did the worst of both scenarios. We, we announced we're going to raise taxes. We didn't raise taxes, but we got all the arrows and the complaints and the heartburn about raising taxes. So if, if we're going to announce it and we're going to go through that, which, you know, is to be decided. But let, let's just, I, I, and we have to go through the hearing and those kind of things, but the reality is we didn't even go to a hearing. We took all the bullets and, and then we didn't even have a hearing on it. We canceled the hearing and we said, oh, we're just going to stick with what we did. If, if we're going to do it, then, then let's at least see it through to the hearing. Let, let's not take all the arrows and the bullets and the, the flak to simply walk away and say, oh, never mind. We were just, we kicked the hornet's nest and then we decided that wasn't. I mean, if we're not going to do it, let's not do it. And that's fine too. But let's, the stings came, right? And we got, but we didn't stick through it. So that would just be my one plea ask as a board.
Okay. Lark, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Looks like there's no other questions, comments, concerns. Um, we will go to our next end.
Madam President?
Oh, yes.
So did any, I don't think anyone gave Lark directions if we wanted to see a version two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well.
I mean.
I, I think, well, Lark, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think through the discussion, there's been numerous questions asked and, and you were taking notes. I think, I think that's a lot of the direction.
But, but we need to give, Lark, I mean specifically, the two extremes, right? If there was no tax, no truth and taxation budgets balanced. The other extreme or the other end of the pendulum, well, maybe not. But in my mind, the other limiting side of the pendulum is uh, the tax increase up to what's falling off. I, I, I don't have an appetite to go beyond that. I mean, we, we could. So this is where we give Lark some direction. I, I would suggest that one potential budget option is that we look at up to
The falling off.
The, the, what's falling off. Does that, the seven point four million number?
So that's actually a good thing to mention because we talked about the thirteen million and Lark said he would bring us a scenario. So we don't want to see thirteen million. We want to see nothing more than the level.
Is that true? Or do you want to see one with thirteen million just to see what it looks like?
Well, just out of curiosity, seven point, that's seven point four or five million. You double that is a little more, it's a million more, that's double the amount, four hundred and forty-four dollars on a home.
Personally, I don't have any appetite to.
Personally, I don't have any appetite to look at anything beyond what is falling off. As one of seven board members, but that's how I feel about it.
Well, and, and that's, if somebody does, even if it's just one of seven that wants to see it, he can put it, it's not inappropriate for us to ask him to put that onto a spreadsheet and show it. But I don't, I'm not hearing anybody's, I don't, I'm with Todd. I'm, we're not voting, but I don't wanna see anything over that. That's a mental block for me.
Would that fall within the flat tax strategy?
Yeah, that's how I'm interpreting it, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'll present that as B.
That's, yeah.
Just those two options next time, and you can talk about anything in between.
Yeah, Lark, sorry, I'm gonna ask one more question. You had talked about, in the past, we had done this flat tax strategy. And maybe Emily talked about a financial plan. I know the Utah Taxpayers Association can be, they put their opinion out there on if we should raise taxes or if we shouldn't, and I know one of the things as well, they, school districts should only be raising taxes every so often. And so is this something, do you, do you ever communicate with the Taxpayers Association? Is that something like the, like, you know, when a constituent said, you need to talk to the legislators? I'm like, yes, I do, and I will continue. Is that something like, school board members should reach out? Is that a question that, do they ever contact you? Because they put out a, a thing that they're supporting, right? They put out a statement of all the entities across the state and say, we support this entity raising taxes, and we don't support this entity raising taxes. And that holds a lot of weight. Is that something that we reach out to the Taxpayers Association and explain, or no? I, I don't know the-
We have for our bond elections, we have not for property taxes traditionally.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right, so do you have enough direction?
I do, thank you.
Okay. Human Resources Director, Charles Hansen, thank you.
All right, good evening. That is a tough act to follow. I hope you all had a chance to see the presentation ahead of time. So I just wanted to hit a couple of highlights, mainly for the, the public, and to just basically give a shout out to my team. There's just so much work that goes on behind the scenes, especially in human resources, and a lot of time that doesn't get mentioned. And so I wanna make sure that I take this opportunity a little bit to, you know, sound a horn for them and, and all the work that happens. So, current statistics, we have around 2,255 employees, 910 of those being teachers. Those numbers are almost identical to last year's. There's only a difference of like 19 employees, so it, it's very similar to last year's. Also, from a turnover perspective, you see those up there from certified, classified, retired, and then resignations. Those numbers are also within a couple percentage points of last year as well. So we experienced about the same headcount and turnover as we did in, in last year's. So I just wanted to skip down. We do have a great relationship with ESS, we do a lot with them. This is just a, a quick comparison of a few other school districts. You see ours is the third one down, with 27 schools. The number of subrequests that we have over this last school year, 22,000, almost 23,000. And then you kinda can see some of the comparisons. So our, our ESS group is a very active group, yes.
I had a question on that slide and that comparison. I was wondering if it would be possible to do a comparison based on, or a percentage of teachers? Because I appreciate that, that we have 27 schools, and somebody else has 20, but that's maybe not relative to, I mean, we're counting 27 schools, but one of them's Ipana, and one of them's Vernon, and one of them's Dougway. I think it might be useful to be able to say, District One that had 2,000 teachers, or 2,500 teachers had this many, and our district, does that make sense? So instead of relating it to a, a number per school, instead of number per FTE, or teacher?
Yeah, no problem.
I think that would be a lot more valuable to see, are, are we trending higher-low? Instead of just a school basis, 'cause some of our schools aren't-
'Cause that number is scary to me.
And just as a clarification-
But maybe good or bad, if we-
That's, that's everyone, right? That's not just teachers, that's anybody that puts in for a sub.
This, yes, that's correct.
For the other districts also.
Right, it is a comparison for the others. Yes, I can get that number, would you just like that email that-
Yeah, that would be great.
And then one other thing-
This makes it look like, sorry, go ahead.
You've, you've prob, and I've probably heard this before, but what's the average dollar figure per sub, per day?
I don't have that answer, I don't know how to-
If you could include that with that same email.
Mr. Reynolds, I think you know that number, don't you? Are you asking how much we pay a sub?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Just the average.
But is that our all-in cost? Does that make sense?
'Cause we, ESS.
The all-in would be closer to 200, but, yeah, the employee may see, I think it's 100. They have different tiers. So it's between 150 and 160, I think.
So, if we could find that number out, from, from that number up, that would be really useful, too.
You bet. All right, moving on, another one for here. Oh, sorry, let me go back.
Sorry, but, yeah, just, when we get that number, it might show that, okay, maybe we don't compare very well with these other schools, and that's why. This chart makes it look like we're doing really badly with people being out of the classroom. So, I guess, just initially, do you think when we get this report and do it by percentage of teachers instead of schools, it's gonna make us go, oh, no, we're fine? Or do we actually have a big problem?
I have a bit of a concern of that personally. This report should show that. Another slide here kind of addresses that a little bit, if you're okay if I move forward to that. This one, on the third bullet point down, this does give you an example, though. There was an all-time record, not that this is a good thing, but there was, in one day, there was 238 requests for substitutes in one day. And, and ESS was able to fill 199 of those. So that, that does seem really high, so that does maybe tie in a little bit to that. So, I will absolutely ask them to break that information down further to get us some more information.
Was that day a training of some sort? Do we know?
Yes, we do know. The, the highlights of that, the 50, the number 50, was for people calling in sick. But there was a district training and personal development day of 50 others that must not have been communicated to ESS ahead of time, 'cause they got that request the same day. So that, with that, between those two was 100 of that 238. And there's a full breakdown, I can send you that if you'd like it, but 100 of that, one of that 238 was those two items alone. So. Okay. Just real quick on this point is a shout out to our licensing, which is Crystal, who you presented earlier, too. This shows from November 23, professional at 80%, October 24 to 83, and February of 25 to 84. Basically, that shows an increase of people coming off of the licensing programs and become, turning into the professional. So that's them getting the endorsements, the things they need to make into that professional category. So that is a, that is a pat on the back piece right there. So I wanted to jump into recruiting real quick. We did do seven recruiting fairs this year. Two of those was virtual, five in-person. We did focus on the areas of higher need, which for us, going back on this chart, is special education. So we did try to attend those schools that was, that had a lot of enrollees in, in the special education program. And with that, we did attend, everything, every fair we attended was in the states. There was no out-of-state travel or anything for this, which is important to us. The, the piece that we want to touch on is where we can improve on this as, as well is, we need to make sure that we are going after these applicants early on in March. And sometimes, we haven't been ready to do that. So that's one of, gonna be one of our focuses. And, and what I mean by that is, if we can know what those, exactly those openings are, the FTEs are, and when we go to these job fairs, we have school districts that are offering jobs on the spot because they're, they're at that position. We can tell them how great we are, and we have a lot of people that are, that are very interested. But by the time we get around that, we can say, yes, we can do this now. A lot of them have already accepted other jobs. So, when we talk about budgets and other things, recruiting and retaining the best teachers is a, is a huge part of that. And we need to be able to do that. If we don't, then that's gonna hurt our, our kids. So, that, that's part of that. So one of the things we wanna do with that is be able to act quicker early on in the, in the year to offer teachers jobs, yeah.
So this is because we were trying so hard to stretch out every single FTE due to our budget restraints, that we didn't open positions as early as other districts, and we lost out on recruiting, that's the bottom line.
Yep.
Yeah, can I also say something about that? It's, it's also a mind, we have to, it's a mind shift with our principals. Principals want to hire their own people. I wanna know if they're gonna fit in my school. I wanna know how they're gonna jive with my faculty, which I'm not discounting that. However, by doing that, it delays our hiring. If we deputize our HR people to go and say, we're gonna have 15 elementary positions, go hire them, they just hire them for Twill County School District, and then we place them at the school. Then we can hold district-level interviews for, you know, different things. So it, it is a little bit, we have to change our principals' mindset a little bit, because they, they want to have that final word on everything. And, and so we need to do better at that as a district, and so I support what Mr. Hansen is saying here.
You're saying you're gonna do that in the future? Or what do we do to make it happen?
Well, it, it, it's a, yes, we can do that, however, your first point, Emily, also has to happen. If, if we're trying to stretch our FTE and not add any FTE, then it delays the hiring process. For instance, this year, we didn't start opening elementary principal, or elementary positions until May. And it was because we were trying to make sure that we were pro, our ratio, we were properly staffed at each of our schools. So it's a, there, there's two aspects working there.
Could there be an assumption that, you know, that we'll need at least five because of people that retire or find a job somewhere else? Is there a conservative number that we could just start with?
Yeah, we can probably figure that out.
Elizabeth.
And this is not a new concept. Davis District did this 30 years ago, Murray's been doing it 20, you know, at least 20 years. That's how I was hired by HR.
All right, thank you. So, just a couple of the highlights real quick. This, this slide, I wanted to show a little bit about some of the tremendous work that goes on behind the scenes. Just from February to May of this year, we handled just under 2,000 phone calls, and that was just to the main line at the district office. So that's not to any of the others, so that's about 500 calls a month, just to the, to the 1,900 line. We also processed just under 1,700 fingerprints for background screenings. And this third one might surprise some of you, that we, each year, we successfully find and eliminate 45 to 50 unemployment fraud cases, which also saves us some money there as well. And the last one, kind of a aha point, is the 24, 25 school year, we did post 630 different jobs and processed over 1,800 EPARS. And so that's a, just wanted to show those, you know, highlight the, the amount of work that goes on behind the scenes that a lot of people don't understand that happens. All right, questions?
Well, I'm gonna start by saying thank you. I think what you'd said, is your team, three, four? It's small, two, three?
Yeah, we have three specialists, we have an assistant, and then licensing.
Anyways, and you just think, thank you for all you do, and we appreciate it. I think there's a lot more that goes on that we don't even realize, so I appreciate it. Emily?
Oh, I suppose there's other ones. Oh, did you wanna go first?
I was just gonna say, I wanna thank Charles and his, his group. And to the point about the staffing, we are probably, well, we are understaffed in, in HR. Our HR team also has to do any type of grievance investigation. There's multiple investigations that go on. And what happens is, those are big bonfires that start, that have to be put out immediately. We're, we're under certain state mandates and federal mandates, that when something happens, we have X amount of days to do it. So when we have to do that, everything else that Mr. Hansen and Ms. Garn are doing has to be put on pause while they go and do these investigations and these grievance hearings and all of that. And then, when, when that's done, then they can go back to their quote-unquote "normal" job until the next fire starts up. And so, they do a great job at it, but it is a juggling act, and something that in the future, we, we need to address with, with more FTE to help our HR department.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's two things that I'm very interested in, in HR, and you probably haven't tracked these stats, as I haven't seen them in the presentation. I'm interested if, keeping track of why people leave their position. Retirement obviously is already on there, but it, you know, it would be salary or stuff going on, or just if there were some trends that we could see, so that when we're doing things like budget, that we're not just shooting into like, well, I think this is why. So we could actually know why people leave, but also how many people are interested in the jobs. So, for instance, like how many qualified applicants per position? And we're, you know, we think about teachers, which is the biggest piece, but there's so many other things that we've talked about, like, you know, in, in maintenance and whatever, and, and maybe some aides or something that we just can't hire. So, it would be nice to be able to look and see where are the places that we're struggling the most. I mean, yeah, that would be great.
You bet. All right. Anything else?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say one other thing?
Oh, yes.
Sorry. To Emily's point, and Valerie asked me this question, we do have an exit survey. However, they're not required to do that. We have to offer it, so we offer it, but we don't have, I mean, on their way out, they don't have to do it. And so, we do collect some data that way, but it's really not, generally, the people that do that are the disgruntled people, I'll be honest with you. So, we gotta figure out a better way to collect that data.
We, we hear a lot, personal reasons, which doesn't boil down to anything.
Bob is confessing he did not do it when he retired.
I'm sorry, Bob.
But that means he didn't retire disgruntled.
Thank you.
I'm looking for a motion.
I will motion, we adjourn.
Okay, thank you very much for coming.